Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Veterans. At this time, we ask that you silence all electronic devices and at no time is anyone to approach the dais. If you'd like to sign up for in-person testimony or have any questions throughout the hearing, please see one of the Sergeant at Arms, Chair Holden. We are ready to begin.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant. Good afternoon. I'm Councilmember Robert Holden, Chair of the Committee on Veterans. Welcome to our oversight hearing on the New York City Veterans Advisory Board. In 2015, the New York City Council passed Local Law 113, which required the creation of the Veterans Advisory Board, or VAB. The VAB was established pursuant to Chapter 75, Section 3103 of the City Charter. The VAB's role is to advise the Commissioner of the New York City Department of Veteran Services on issues concerning veterans, as well as active-duty, Reserve, and Guard service members in New York City, and to connect the Mayor's Administration, DVS, New York City Council, and the veterans community. Veterans have served with dedication and distinction and possess invaluable perspectives on civic life. Their voices should be heard not only on national matters, but also on local and state issues that impact their lives and their families. Members of the VAB are appointed to three-year terms either by the Mayor or the City Council Speaker. Actually, five public sessions, or I'm sorry, annually, five public sessions, one in each borough, are required to be held in order to collect public input on issues of importance and/or concerns to the veteran community. In its annual report, the VAB recounts its activities for the past year and plans for the coming year, reports on progress of its prior recommendations, including updates on proposed legislation, and offers new recommendations to the Mayor and the City Council, as well as to DVS on policy, program, and legislation. Today, we'll be looking at the VAB's most recent recommendations and hearing from both DVS and the VAB on how each sees the work and effectiveness of the VAB. It is important to note that our committee has been asked to hold this hearing about the VAB by interested public stakeholders, and today, we are doing just that. So, you know, how can we, how can the City Council better support the VAB in its mission? And what improvements can be made to ensure that veterans' voices are amplified and acted upon? That is the focus of today's hearing. So at this time, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues on the committee. We have Vicky Palladino from Queens and Joanne Areola from Queens. Anybody else? Kristi? Also, I'd like to thank the, I'd like to also thank the committee staff who worked to prepare for this hearing. John LaRosa, our Legislative Counsel to my right, Regina Paul out in the audience, or she's, she's in another room. Policy analyst, we saw her though, yes. Ross Goldstein, our financial analyst. And also, finally, thanks to Daniel Cusina, my Chief of Staff, who's hiding in the side there somewhere. I'd like to turn it over to our Legislative Counsel to administer the oath to our witnesses of the administration. Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to council members' questions?
I do.
Thank you. As a reminder to all our witnesses, please state your name prior to your testimony for the record.
My name is James Hinden. I serve as Commissioner for the New York City Department of Veteran Services. And, you know, good afternoon, Chair Holden, committee members, and advocates. Thank you for inviting us to participate in today's hearing about New York City's Veterans Advisory Board, also known as the VAB. I'm joined today by Jason Lockren, our agency's Senior Advisor for Intergovernmental Affairs. By way of background, according to Chapter 75 of the New York City Charter, the New York City Veterans Advisory Board consists of 13 members, seven of whom are appointed by the Mayor, six by the City Council Speaker. Two of those 13 members are to be immediate family members, survivors, or caregivers of a veteran. The remaining 11 members are to be veterans. The VAB has five duties. They are: One, assist the DVS, advise the DVS Commissioner. Two, hold at least one public meeting in each borough each year. Three, keep a record of its deliberations. Four, determine its own rules of procedure. And five, submit an annual report of its activities to the Mayor and City Council. The report should include policy and legislative recommendations for DVS and the Council. For decades, the Veterans Advisory Board has listened to the needs of New York City's veteran and military-affiliated community. The VAB has translated those needs into sound advice on matters, including but not limited to the identification of a veteran liaison in each agency, the expansion of the Veterans Advisory Board to include veteran family members and caregivers, DVS's provision of contracting support to veteran nonprofits that do business with the City of New York, and the creation of DVS. That being said, the VAB's work, all of our work, is nested within broader challenges that must be tackled if we are to make sure that New York City's veteran community continues to thrive. Chief among those needs is the need for self-identification among veterans. According to the VA's FY23 Geographic Distribution of VA Expenditures Report, the veteran self-identification rate nationwide is 34.3%. That proportion dips to 29.8% in New York State, then to 24.1% in New York City. This compounds with another issue: The federal government does not aggressively market VA services. Case in point, the VA has a $369.3 billion FY23 budget, 25 budget. The VA's budget is the largest in the federal government, second only to the budget for the Department of Defense. However, many families are not aware of all offerings that are available to them. That, and there is no dedicated line for marketing and/or advertising in the VA's publicly available budget documents. Add to that, America has a declining veteran population overall. Older, draft-era veterans are passing away. Our military was significantly larger during the conscript era, which ended in 1973, compared to the all-volunteer era that we operate in today. The annual rate of veteran population decline is 1.82% nationally, 3.19% in New York State, and 4.83% in New York City based on VA and census data. Compound the lack of self-identification, limited marketing, and population decline issues, and you have a group of extremely complex, interwoven problems. The solution is to roll up our sleeves as a community, unite, and do the hard work needed to triage what is in front of us. For one thing, there must be a robust, whole-of-government approach towards identifying and serving U.S. military service members, past and present, and their loved ones. Secondly, there must exist strong public-private partnerships throughout the innovation ecosystem so that all stakeholders can join in this struggle. I'm speaking of government, finance, academia, industry, the entrepreneurial sector, and the nonprofit space. Thirdly, and most importantly, undergirding this all must be a strong, influential veteran community. This includes individuals, families, networks, and organizations, you name it. The tip of the spear for New York City's influential veteran community is its Veterans Advisory Board. To that point, the VAB has played a critical role in providing the situational awareness that DVS and our leaders in government, elected and appointed officials, need when working to solve challenging community problems. By providing thoughtful, community-driven recommendations in its annual report, the Veterans Advisory Board establishes an enduring line of communication between New York City's veterans and their local government. The VAB's public meetings serve as a forum for stakeholders to promote activities and opportunities to veterans and their loved ones. VAB meetings are also a place where, in real time, DVS accepts feedback and input from the public, listening to our community's advice. We course correct on the spot when necessary. Highlights of DVS actions that were directly influenced by the Veterans Advisory Board are the Veteran Business Leadership Association, VBLA. DVS launched this effort to empower veteran entrepreneurs by providing one-on-one assistance with city and state certifications, contracting opportunities, and networking. This program exemplifies how enhanced contracting capabilities can directly benefit New York City veterans. We've partnered with organizations such as the NYC Department of Small Business Services, the LaGuardia Community College Apex Accelerator, Bunker Labs, and JP Morgan Chase. These organizations offer a variety of services geared towards veteran and veteran spouse business owners that facilitate starting, operating, and growing a veteran-owned business within New York City. Links and further information on all VBLA programs can be found at nyc.gov/vetbusiness. Housing and Support Services: Since the establishment of our Housing and Support Services team in 2015, DVS has successfully housed 1,417 homeless veterans. This demonstrates our commitment to addressing critical housing issues identified by the VAB. More information can be found online at nyc.gov/vethousing. Mission Vet Check: This outreach program, which was inspired by the VAB, connects veterans to essential services. Mission Vet Check addresses gaps in communication and support for our most vulnerable veteran populations. The program is effectively us, volunteers, and our partners at New York Cares, ensuring that someone calls each veteran in New York City and conveys to them at some point that we see you, we appreciate you, and we love you. Is there anything that you need? In the most recent holiday session for Mission Vet Check, held on December 23rd, 2024, the program yielded in one day 1,563 check-in calls, proving to be the most successful single-Mission Vet Check session held since the pandemic. Details can be found online at nyc.gov/vetcheck. Supporting Veteran Vendors: New York City has a tradition of supporting veterans interested in operating as street vendors. The city and state's support dates back to laws established to benefit 19th-century veterans hungry for entrepreneurial opportunities in the wake of the Civil War. Veterans Committee Chairman Robert Holden introduced Intro 686 of 2024. Intro 686 looks to amend the membership of the Street Vendor Advisory Board to include the Commissioner of DVS, or their designated, to increase the number of speaker-appointed members to the Street Vendor Advisory Board to seven, so as to include a veteran community member. It would also require the Department of Veteran Services to post on its website information related to resources and support for veteran vendors. Currently, information that we place online for veteran street vendors can be found at nyc.gov/vetvendors. This bill has been continually suggested and advocated for by the Veterans Advisory Board. Along with them, we thank the Chair, the Veterans Committee, and the entirety of the City Council for their support with this pending matter. The partnership between DVS and the Veterans Advisory Board is rooted in a shared mission to enhance the quality of life for New York City's veterans and their families. Over the years, this collaboration has yielded tangible results, ensuring that the voices of our veteran community are heard and that their needs are addressed through innovative programs and policies. To name some of these achievements, one is contracting for, the contracting power for small-dollar contracts. One of the pivotal recommendations from the VAB has been to enhance DVS's contracting capacity, particularly concerning small-dollar discretionary awards. In February of 2023, DVS was granted the authority to approve discretionary contracts of up to $20,000 for initiatives benefiting veterans. This milestone has enabled DVS to support veteran businesses through direct partnerships, facilitate funding for grassroots veteran service organizations that provide essential community-based programs, and streamline the procurement process in order to quickly address pressing needs within the veteran community. This enhanced contracting power aligns with our objective to foster economic empowerment among veterans. It underscores New York City's commitment to its veteran population. Aligning the VAB with the New York City Community Veteran Engagement Board, or with New York City's Community Veterans Engagement Board, the VAB has emphasized the importance of strengthening its ties with federal programs in order to increase transparency and optimize effectiveness. In response, DVS facilitated the VAB's introduction to the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs Community Veterans Engagement Board program. In 2025, the VAB will double as the Community Veterans Engagement Board, or CWEB, for New York City. The Veterans Advisory Board doubling as the CWEB means that future VAB meetings will be attended by VA leaders in addition to representatives from the Department of Veteran Services. Attendance at VAB meetings will spike relative to prior history because the meetings will be held on VA sites. We will have more lead time to promote VAB meetings than ever before. This is because working with the VA, the VAB will identify meeting locations well in advance. And as we reflect on that progress that's been made, it is clear that the partnership between DVS and the VAB is stronger than ever. Moving forward, we remain committed to expanding our contracting authority to maximize support for veteran-focused initiatives, strengthening the connection between the VAB and CWEB in order to ensure comprehensive community engagement and service delivery, and continuously evaluating and improving programs to meet the evolving needs of our veteran population. In light of this, we would like to voice some recommendations that we believe would increase the effectiveness of the VAB further. Right now, members of the VAB serve three-year terms. Start-and-end dates for the members have no rhyme and reason. They are not uniformly staggered. In a perfect world, each year, one-third of the VAB's members would transition on and off the board, while one-third transitioned off. So one-third transitions off, one-third transitions on, or, at the discretion of the Mayor and City Council Speaker, existing members would be reappointed. Given 13 members, this equates to four members rolling on and off during year one, four members rolling on and off during year two, and five members rolling on and off during year three. The start-and-end dates for members would match with the start-and-end dates for the fiscal year. New York City's fiscal year begins on July 1st. Streamlining this process would ease the administrative burden and further increase the efficacy of the VAB. Another problem that the VAB faces is a lack of timely appointments to vacant seats and a lack of timely reappointments when needed for members retained in current seats. In my time as DVS Commissioner and my time as a member of the Veterans Advisory Board for two years before that, dating back to 2018, I've never seen the board current on all of its appointments. I've also never seen all of the seats on the board actively filled. Even today, as of this testimony, the family member/caregiver seat appointed by the Council Speaker has not yet been filled. It's been vacant for years. Consistently filling vacant seats would allow the VAB to maximize the diversity of its viewpoints, leadership, and opinions. Finally, we support current efforts that would have the New York City Veterans Advisory Board double as the VA's New York City Community Veterans Engagement Board. This takes the synergy and effectiveness of the VAB and puts it on steroids. Another reason why a VAB/CAB/CWEB merger is important: It is highly likely that in the spring of 2026, the next iteration of the VA's Asset Infrastructure Review Commission, the AIR Commission, will recommend to the U.S. Senate that the VA hospital located in Manhattan, Brooklyn, and a major VA clinic in Staten Island be closed. This would echo recommendations made by the AIR Commission in its 2022 report. Those recommendations were ignored due to the political composition of the U.S. Senate at the time. The Senate Majority Leader was a New Yorker. That's no longer the case. If and when the next AIR Commission report says these VA medical facilities need to be shut down because not enough veterans are using them, then we need an active CWEB to help counter that narrative and to advocate internally in our community's defense. The potential hospital closure fight brings things full circle when I began by saying that the number-one problem our community faces is that we collectively do not self-identify. The number-two problem is the VA does not market its services. And the number-three problem is that the veteran population is declining. Even given future projections of New York's veteran community, assuming no increase in the military size and no wars, there are, there will be more than enough veterans in 2045 to fill our VA clinics and hospitals almost two times over. The challenge is taking steps to inspire our brothers and sisters to self-identify. Along with DVS and elected leaders such as yourselves, the CWEB will be near the center of gravity for this fight. In conclusion, I'd like to express my gratitude to the New York City Council, the Veterans Advisory Board, and the entire New York City veteran community for their unwavering support. Together, we've made significant progress. However, our work is far from complete. By continuing to collaborate and innovate, we can ensure that New York City remains a national leader in veteran services. We are happy to answer any questions the committee may have. Information on the topics spoken about today and all things involving the Department of Veteran Services can be found at nyc.gov/vets. In addition to the website, nyc.gov/vets, our agency can be reached via telephone at 212-416-5250, email at connect@veterans.nyc.gov, and social media using the hashtag @NYCVeterans. Details about the Veterans Advisory Board can be found at nyc.gov/vetboard. Separately, all veterans serving nonprofits that are interested in applying for City Council discretionary funding are encouraged to visit nyc.gov/vetcouncilfunding. The deadline to apply for City Council discretionary funding is Wednesday, February 19th. Veterans interested in applying to join their local community board are encouraged to visit nyc.gov/vetcommunityboard. For all boroughs except for Richmond County, application to join one's local community board are due from mid-February through early March. The application to apply to join one's community board in Staten Island is rolling. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We've been joined by Councilmember Kristi Marmorato, a committee member. And I just want to, Commissioner, again, I thank you for your very thorough testimony. Just some housekeeping, because, you know, we looked at the website and there are, you know, the bylaws of the Veterans Advisory Board state that there should be 11 members. Yet, you know, your website claims there are 13, but it only lists 11, one of whom has already resigned. So just in the general, you know, as we check the website, it's not updated. There's no minutes from the 24, from 2024, any of the meetings of the Veterans Advisory Board. Why is that? Who's in charge of updating the website, first of all?
I want to start with the bylaws issue. The bylaws, that's an internal function of the VAB as far as, it goes back to, one thing I mentioned in the testimony, as far as, you know, determine its own rules of procedure. So that's not something that we, DVS, have a handle on. That's the VAB. Also, when we look at things that involve a board, we look at law. We look at Chapter 75 of the New York City Charter, which states the composition of the board, and it states it as 13, as far as the law. And we look at, say, the Administrative Code, you know, Section 3105, which talks about, you know, how these meetings are to be presented as far as our role here. So for us, we are constantly leaning on what is in law and not what these bylaws are. And I can speak on that a little further, but a lot of this goes back to the autonomy of the board. We want to be as mindful as we can of the autonomy. Also, we want to recognize what we are to do and not do in law. And that's a perfect example where it's 13 members, Mr. Chair.
So it's 13 members, but again, my question is, who's in charge of doing the website, updating it? Is it your, DVS, or is it VAB?
We're in charge of doing the website, and so that's, it's on us. And I guess for us, it's about, you know, having the updated information to make those updates.
So did you get the minutes from VAB for the 2024? Because not one meeting, the minutes are on there. So I wanted to go and check what happened. I can't find it.
Yeah, Chair, thank you for that question. One thing that we did last year at the end of the year was we collaborated with the VAB to provide a Zoom account for the VAB meetings from now on because it was more streamlined for us to be able to download the actual meeting minutes from what occurred. And so, because it was a relatively new partnership we just did by issuing the Zoom account, 2025 will be updated more frequently and in a more streamlined way.
Yeah, it was updated just, I think, today, right? There were some things that were up that would add, because we were checking on this. We wanted, we kept getting different answers on things and some contradictions. And not only, but you said that the bylaws need to be, I think that's where, you know, we'll question VAB, that the bylaws are internal to VAB. So that needs to be, like, we need to codify certain things and make sure that it's very clear there's no contradictions, because the structure is very important. If there's no structure to it, then people start to drop by the wayside. Also, you know, we talked about, like, people not showing up. If you, I mean, they're volunteers, and I understand it conflicts with schedules, but, and again, it's not up to, maybe up to your, your agency, and we'll question VAB, that attendance policies for the board members probably needs to be codified. I mean, that's what I'm looking at, like, some kind of standard. Like, you know, they do that for community board members, but it doesn't always trickle up to the Borough President, let's say, to enforce it. So we need some, the agency, probably your agency, to enforce the attendance policies. And, you know, we've heard things about also term limits for, which, you know, I personally feel term limits for volunteers should not be put on there. I mean, you know, so somebody serving 20 years, it's not, it's not, if they're contributing, that's, and they want to do it, and they're good, that they should stay on. So we've heard a lot of criticism on how to change it or how to make it more structured, but we need to tread lightly on that, at least to, again, these people that are, the veterans that are volunteering should, should actually, we should work with them. So, and these, you have the option to do both. You could, you can go physically to the location, and you could also work remotely at the hearing. So that, that's a good, we didn't always have that, which is good. That's one thing out of, that came out of the pandemic, Zoom came out, and we were able to have more meetings that way.
Mr. Chair, I want to just be clear, like, we'll come back to this issue of the board and versus DVS, who has what, you know, responsibilities. I got to acknowledge, we've got people who are doing this as volunteers, and we appreciate that. And so we want to, I want to, you know, I don't want it in any way be seen as us throwing these folks under the bus. We're doing excellent work. I want to say that.
What we were saying is that if somebody hasn't shown up in three years, they, they've shown that they're not interested, but yet they still have the seat on the board. And that's what we need to codify, like, are there going to be standards rather than? And, and you know, your comment on, you know, in your testimony about the vacancies not being filled is another problem, and that comes from the council. So that's up to, that's my job to make sure that we see, you know, we fill every seat, because we are, they are volunteers. And you really need, you know, with 13 members, you really need most people there to actually contribute, because they do have a lot to offer. So I just don't want somebody taking up, you know, space on the board for three years and not, and just not showing up. So that, I guess the board will make that decision, right?
Well, I think it's, it's really about folks serving at the pleasure of the speaker, serving at the pleasure of the speaker, so it's them as appointees. And then that could be something else that deals with the internal board of government, as far as the process.
Yeah, the appointments from the mayor are seven, and then there's six from the speaker. And of the six from the speaker, only five have been filled, right? We have a vacancy.
Correct.
But how long has the vacancy been?
It's, it has never been filled. This is when the board was expanded. I believe it took effect in 2022, when they, the expansion from 11 to 13 members to have those caregiver seats, and that caregiver seat has not yet been filled on the speaker's side. That's the one seat that's currently vacant.
And where do the recommendations for board members come from? Does it come from your office, your agency, or does it come from?
Good question. It's, you know, for the speaker's side, they do what they do. We don't know what goes on that side.
Yeah, no, but you're the mayor's side.
For us, it's the mayor's Office of Appointments. They usually, they will often work in coordination with us on these things. So, yeah.
So I'm going to get down to a series of questions that, you know, some of it you covered in your testimony. But just for the record, I wanted to ask, we talked about, you know, codifying roles and responsibilities. So in its 2023 annual report, the VAB recommended codifying the responsibilities of DVS and VAB, which I just talked about, or some of it, to ensure both parties, you know, really are aligned on the expectations of the, of the going forward. So how does DVS plan to formalize or codify its relationship with the VAB so that there is greater clarity on roles, responsibilities, and expectations? You covered a little bit of that.
I want to go deeper on this one, because this is, it's very important with the, we have a very good relationship with VB right now, as far as, you know, the current Commissioner, current Chair. I worry about the, I love the idea of the board having its autonomy. I say this as someone who was on the board before coming into seat. What if you have a period where there's tension between the Veterans Advisory Board, which reflects the community, and us as government? If you codify things, if you get to a point where there's dependency between us, if there's tension, that can kneecap any autonomy that board has. You can go back in time to 2014, the beginning of the last mayor's time, when there was a lot of advocacy around establishing DVS, supposed to be the Mayor's Office of Veterans Affairs. There was a lot of friction where the board was on one side of this and the administration was on another. And so when I look at this, right now, we're in good times, but you've got to think a worst-case scenario of how do we do this in a way where we can still be thoughtful and try our best to make sure they have what they need logistically, but not get caught up where we've got, you know, deals or, you know, things signed between people who come and go between board members and commissioners that could, in different circumstances, be used to go against that committee, as far as against the board. So that's my big worry about codifying. And that's why I say I'm fine with doing it if we do it in law, so it's something where, no matter what.
That's a broad stroke, though. There are certain things that need to be codified, so we have some, some standards. We don't want to make it very strict, but we want to make it where there has to be some, some rules. You know, you have, you have bylaws.
This strikes at the heart of it, Mr. Chair. We are guests who are invited to speak at these meetings that the Veterans Advisory Board holds. And so I'm just wary about, when we talk about codifying things, when we are another, just like, you know, you've had representatives from your team, you've come and spoken. We are, so I just want to be careful about how ingrained we are in the form and execution.
Yeah, but I think we can go back and forth on this, but you do need some standards for attend. I mean, this is my opinion, and we'll hear from the committee members and also we'll hear from you, from your office. But there has to be some standards that we have to create, whether it's the mayor. The mayor's going to appoint seven individuals to VAB. Want to make sure they're showing up. Same thing with the speaker's office. The fact that we left, our side left a vacant seat is disgraceful. And we will make sure, but, but again, just getting that information is difficult because of, where do you find this stuff? And then when you do look on the website, it's not accurate. So that's what, that's why I think we need, and I can't even tell you, and we'll, we'll hear from VAB, but I can't tell you who's not showing up, who's, you know, if we're going to appoint somebody, at least the speaker's side, the city council's side, going to appoint somebody, we'll make sure they're showing up. So that, that I think needs, even though they're volunteers, they still are signing on to be on the board.
And I don't disagree with that, Mr. Chair. I just think that if that's the curve, if that's a remedy we'll have for the attendance issue you pointed out, that that should be done through law. That's just what I'm saying. Because I feel as though it's, you know, it's not, I don't want to get in the realm of being, of us managing or having control over. That's just what I'm saying. Because I feel as though it's, you know, it's not, I don't want to get in the realm of being, uh, of us managing or having control over this independent board. I I just want to be mindful of that. And so I have no issues with what you're saying. I just think that if we do something like that, take these measures.
They're independent, but not totally, right? Because you, they have nothing to say about, or at least, uh, we'll hear from the V A B, but they have nothing to say about appointments. I mean, we do and you do. You're, the city council does and the mayor's office. So that's not, you know, you're, you're, you're actually, you know, they're, they're not separate and apart. They do have, um, we, we have to provide, you know, um, I mean, we provide certainly, we're, we're looking at, uh, the V A B, we're doing a hearing on the V A B now. And, um, so we, we have to provide oversight. Your office should provide oversight also. In your, in your role, I mean, we already saw that the website hasn't been updated. So that's something that we, we found out, we looked at it and we said, why not? And then, well, you know, that that's not doing the V A, the board any service by having it lag behind for a year and a half or two years and the, and the, and the information not accurate. So anything we could do, I mean, I'd like to, um, make sure that the website, and that could be done, you know, within one or one day. So I think, and and the fact that in our side, that we don't, we have a vacant seat for years now, like I said, is a disgrace. Uh, and I'll, I'll, I'll make sure that we address that. Uh, the, whereas, you know, we'll, we'll come up with recommendations for, um, replacements or at least, um, appointments. You know, and it could be a collaborative effort from your part, you know, yours and the V A B, but I'm not going to say we're going to just, you know, turn everything over and not provide oversight. We will. Um, supporting veterans engagement, let's, let's go into political process. In two thousand twenty three annual report, the V A B called for investing in resources to encourage and support veteran ga- engagement in the political process, including placing veterans on community boards, which is near and dear to me. Uh, I'd mentioned this, I have legislation also to create, the, a veterans committee on each community board. But how can D V S collaborate with other city agencies or offices, you know, the Borough President, for instance, and, um, to promote greater veteran representation and civic participation on, um, you know, on community boards in particular, or or just other, uh, boards? But but create it like, create a, especially the the Borough Presidents could, could make sure that we get veterans on each community board. Uh, and then hopefully a veterans committee on each community board.
I think what we can do is work to get our assets in front of more of the elected officials, more of the Borough Presidents on these things as far as we routinely and organically promote, uh, community boards as an opportunity. We tell folks, go to N Y C dot gov slash Vet Community Board. We mention it here at our, uh, hearings, we mention it at the V A B meetings, we mention it in public. We also promote it on the website and social media and our newsletter, but I know that we can work to try to get our assets on this in front of more of our elected officials to amplify it. Another thing too, a caveat to that, that, that recommendation from the V A B, we are mindful of our people not being, we cannot involve ourselves in politics. So when it talks about in a way of getting veterans to engage in the political process, the line for us is promoting getting in touch with your community board and joining that board, not doing other things to get involved politically. So that's something that that we're very, very mindful of. And then another piece of this, which has something I mentioned before, is let's not forget, only one out of four veterans in this city self identifies. And so for us, we're working to get as much data as we can about our veterans in the hands of our elected officials to help amplify those efforts to have these touches. And so this goes back to agreement that we've signed with the council speaker, we've signed with.
But this is, my question is really talking about, uh, partnership. But isn't that, we're not talking about political when we talk about community boards. It's it's volunteer position. And we talked about, um, can you help us in getting, uh, the Borough Presidents to include a a veterans box on the application for community boards?
Absolutely. We can, we can reach out.
By the way, I try to find an application many times if it's not in, in, in the zone of the application process. I mean, I think Manhattan has it, um, where you can get an application twelve months a year, but not every, not every borough has that. Every, um, Borough President's office, you can't find the application. So I think that should be something, whether we have to do it with legislation, but it should be, it should be on like where you could download a, an application and there should be a box for veterans. Will you help us do that?
We, we will, uh, challenge, we're facing, I have no issues with that. I'm with you, Mr. Chair. Right now, so on our website at N Y C dot gov slash Vet Community Board, we're waiting to get the latest and greatest as far as updated information from the various boroughs so we can have it updated right now. So right now, we've still got, uh, twenty twenty four information. So that's something we're working to update and so we'll let you know how that goes. But also do what we can to tie in with the various Borough Presidents so we can lock into their comms operations on this.
So in, you know, what, and again, I'm referring to all these twenty twenty three annual reports because those are the latest we have. I think the twenty four is coming out, should be out, uh, sometime in the next few months. But, um, in the twenty, in its twenty twenty three annual report, the V A B, uh, we, the V A B's report recommended providing personnel support for the V A B, including through legislation to ensure continuity of staffing and technology management. So this is something where we can, both, both offices can help. Um, so can D V S describe any steps, any steps it has taken or plans to take to provide dedicated staff or technology support to assist V A B with scheduling, meeting, logistics, record keeping, things like that and o- other operational needs?
So we've, um, we've had an open offer to the V A B to, uh, you know, uh, help get a work study for them. Uh, this goes back to twenty twenty one. And so we just stand by with that as far as getting that job description so we can put it out. Uh, right now, we post our VA work study opportunities on our, uh, website. Um, we post it in the, uh, the Initiatives tab where VA work study, so at N Y C dot gov slash vets, Initiatives tab, VA work study. And so we also include it in our newsletter. And so for us, once we have a job description, we're happy to get the word out and hope that we can get someone. If the VA work study program, that's someone who's currently using the, uh, if they're currently using their VA benefits, be it for vocational rehab or post nine eleven G I bill, et cetera, uh, they are able to work for up to twenty five hours per week, um, as a work study where they're paid, you know, tax free to provide that, that, that assistance. So we're hoping that could be a way to do this. Another thing, what's, what's tough about this one from a broader angle, uh, Mr. Chair, there are more than two hundred boards and commissions in New York City as far as New York City boards and commissions, seventeen of which are advisory boards of some sort. And none of those advisory boards have dedicated staff. So we're trying to do this in a way where within what we can touch, we can try to get some support to these folks. Because I feel that when we talk about having the dedicated staff, that it escalates beyond just being about us, but about these other seventeen advisory board. And I feel like that's a discussion that's beyond my pay grade. So now it's really trying to help with the VA work studies. And there's another program called D O D Skill Bridge that's available as far as providing folks who are transitioning out of the military, who can work full time, supporting the board.
You know, on, on the subject of, um, you know, working, um, to to actually spread the word about our committee's hearings on veterans. So we want to, you know, increase communication about our hearings on this, on this, um, committee. So in its twenty twenty three annual report, the V A B recommended that D V S uses existing communication platforms to inform veterans and their families about Committee on Veteran Hearings. I know you do that verbally, but is that on your website? Uh, do you post our, our veterans, uh, committee hearings on your website?
We've started posting them on the website. For us, the biggest piece has been doing it through social media, Mr. Chair, through Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn and Twitter. And we most often, you know, did not put it on the, in the newsletter. That was something that came from the board. We saw an immediate spike in attendance once we started posting a newsletter last year and we thank the board for that. And so for us, it's the newsletter, it's the, uh, website, which is, this is our first time really putting it on our hero. When you go to N Y C dot gov slash vets, you can see on the front the tab for the hearing and then social media between Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn and X.
Okay, uh, let's talk about addressing potential areas of disagreement because, you know, anytime you have a number of people in the room, they're going to disagree. Uh, and it's not, you know, it's certainly, we've heard some disagreements from, you know, um, and criticism of this committee, of me, of, of, um, of you, Commissioner, we hear, we hear criticisms and we, we, it comes with the territory. But, um, let me just tell you, stakeholders have raised questions about whether there are areas of disagreement between D V S and V A B and is, is it being discussed? And could you speak to any points of contention of how they're being addressed? Obviously, uh, we've heard criticisms about the lack of appointments or the makeup of the V A B that people have been on a long time, that there should be, um, term limits, that we should, you know, limit them to six years or whatever terms. Yeah, again, speaking personally, I, I, I think if you're a volunteer, you're doing it out of the goodness of your heart and we should not discourage, as long as you're showing up. And that's why I said codifying it though. But can you, can you address some of the things that you've heard about the criticism of your role along with the V A B, uh, role?
I think that, um, I want to start by saying, I feel like that it's been a very collegial relationship when I think about the V A B. I don't think of it as being something where it's been, you know, um, a lot of tension and whatnot. It's just, there's certain structural issues that come up and I'll, I'll speak to those. But at the end of the day, I feel like, you know, it's, you know, ninety, ninety five percent of things we have overlap, maybe five percent where it's not, but it's not about that. It's really the structural components than than it is other things. And one other thing I'll say before I get into some of these issues, we're all on the same team. Everyone doing this work between you and the council side, between us at D V S, between our friends at the V A B, veteran stakeholders. We're all doing what we can to be right by veteran and military families. And so just a couple of things that that I'd flag. You know, one is, it's the logistical aspects of it as far as just things like, you know, okay, let's identify the location for this meeting. Let's make sure we've got a Zoom account, et cetera, lined up. And we tried to resolve that by having the, the V A B aligned with the VA now, with the Community Veterans Engagement Board, where now you've got these meetings occurring this year at a VA facility in a place where you know that we ample attendance and we know that the location's secured. We can promote well in advance. So that's one logistical piece.
No, but do you help set up the meetings for them at that, that location? Do you, do you help them? I mean, let's say, reach out to the, the location and try to help them with, um, in in scheduling it and and gaining the hall or?
If, uh, if the V A B reaches out and says, hey, we need help finding a location, then we jump, it's an ask. So it's, that's right, currently, that's how it is. Another piece of it was, what J O referred to, the Zoom account as far as just having, um, a, a Zoom account that's available for V A B. Recognizing the group has no resource, people have no, there's no personnel nor non-personnel funding towards it. So getting that account for them, which also redounds to help us now have the, the easy access to recording of events.
Wait, the V A B doesn't have a budget?
Correct.
Nothing?
Correct. Yep, that's right. This goes back to what I'm saying, where it's bigger than us in that what we're describing, this is what the advisory boards look like in the city as far as being in this situation. So it's a bigger conversation on resourcing this. And so logistical pieces are things that we've worked to triage. Uh, first off, these meetings being at VA facilities this year, timed in with VA. Also, the Zoom account being already set up where it's accessible such that they have control of that account, we can still access the recordings, we can post things more swiftly. Other issues, it would be, I think the, I think managing expectations is tough in that there are recommendations V A B will come to us with and it just takes time for us as government to get these things done. We work and we hear them, but it's, it's, it's complicated simply because of this being longer for us going through bureaucracy. Couple of examples. You know, you know, one of the recommendations was about, uh, allowing for veteran owned businesses to have contracting opportunities with the city. Contracting opportunities or the contracting rules for the city are, you know, adjudicated by New York State. That's a New York State legislative issue. And so that's not us, yet we hear these things. We try to voice them as best we can. And so that's one example. Another one is we know about the, the fight to have co-ops added to the home loan program. Same thing, it's a federal issue. It deals with our federal elected officials. It's not us. We work to try to push it. Um, there's another one very important that we're proud of, but it's taking time. It's transitioning our Vet Connect platform, our online services platform to a new vendor. And that transition process, it's looking to be in effect no later than May of this year, but it's just taking time. And so this is things where it's beyond our control and we look at what's around us, working in government. Uh, another one is our Dwyer program, how long it took for us to get that off the ground to be able to make that available for our veteran nonprofits to compete for that funding that we got from the state. Same thing. So a lot of the recommendations that V A B gives where we unfortunately just, we, if I could snap my finger, I'd love to, but we can't. And so I think that's a point of friction at times.
All right. So, so let me ask you something. I'm going to put you on the spot here. Um, what recommendations would you make to the mayor about V A B?
I think that, uh, for V A B specifically, let me think. Because I would say the same thing I mentioned as far as appointments, because that hits both the speaker and the mayor. But that's something where we're up on appointments, we're current on appointments.
I got one. How about a budget, Mr. Mayor, for V A B?
This is the same thing too, where we got to be clear when we talk budget for one, we're talking budget for all. And so not against it. I'm just making it clear.
I don't, I don't get that. Wait a minute, budget for one? We're talking about V A B.
We're, it's, it's the precedent. It's very similar to the community board suggestion too, Mr. Chair.
They can have a budget. Community boards have budgets.
No, no, I'm talking about having, telling each of the fifty, you know, nine community boards, you must have a committee for a subcommittee on veterans. You see what I mean? It's kind of when, it's like, it's the precedent piece of it where I agree with the spirit of it, I just want to call out the, this other dynamic. It's.
No, I could, you know, we, we're, we're trying to do legislation where the city council could mandate that each community board have a veterans, uh, committee, which is not like, you know, the, the, if we're going to try to get veterans to self identify, it's a good way. It's a good start. And if we want more veterans on community boards, if they certainly can, can help and they, they, they bring, um, a sense of stability to, to the, uh, the community boards, that I think that we should, that should be legislation. The Borough President should do it, you know, they should do it on their own. They shouldn't need legislation.
I, I agree with you. I'm just saying it could be seen as.
But I think the recommendation, my crit, my question is, what would you bring back to the mayor? I would like you to bring back to the mayor, because I did, um, uh, that the mayor should fund your agency quadrupling. And you know what his answer was when I, I asked, I asked him a question on his, uh, he had a Zoom, uh, meeting with the council and I said, you know, your agency is a five million, essentially a five million dollar budget, the smallest in the city of New York. And I said, we, we should increase that budget because you can't even communicate with veterans to do a mailing, to do something to, to, you know, actually reach out. And we are lagging, like you said, many hearings, you say at every hearing, that New York City veterans are lagging behind the national average on so many issues, so many programs within the VA. So if we're not, our veterans are lagging behind the national average, then we need to increase the budget. And you know what the mayor said to me? And and he, he kind of said that we shouldn't have to do the work of the, of the VA in the, in New York City, which was, I thought appalling. And I, I criticized him on that. I said, that's ridiculous. You know, we, we're talking about our veterans and our, our residents of New York City and have served our country. And if we can give so much to people that didn't serve our, our country, that weren't even in our country up till a few weeks ago, and we're giving them, we're giving, uh, migrants money, a lot of money from the city council and from the mayor's office, that we should be able to increase your budget. So I, I'm going to challenge you, Commissioner, to get to the mayor and say, let's at least fund V A B. And it's not talking about, we're not talking about millions. We're talking about thousands of dollars that they, they could have a budget and they could make, we can make their lives easier. So, uh, I would ask you to do that.
I, I feel like this is, I'm thinking this is deja vu because it's the same, similar question last hearing. And I think, you know, as I'm taking it in, my response would be this as far as, you know, asks for the mayor. It's same ask as far as for the council to fund the organizations. In other words, I don't, I'm not just thinking about it in terms of fund the V A B. I'm, I'm with you on that. It's fund, like, we've got some very good veteran organizations doing good work out here. And what can we do to reward that as it continues? In other words, it's, I always say, if it's a dollar on the table between me and one of our people doing things out in the street, give it to our people. We need it, but they need it too. I mean, at the end of the day, six point four million, which is the entire budget, that's, I know that's small compared to a hundred and twelve billion, but you've got veteran nonprofits out here living hand to mouth right now for whom, you know, I just want to, oh, that's what it should be. So if you ask me, like, if I.
We're not talking about a large.
But I just want to say, like, that's my, my ask would be, put the money on the table, but don't have to go to D V S.
All right, I just, I just need.
Put it to the community. I just want to say.
I, I just need everyone on the same page. If we're serving veterans and you've dedicated your life, actually, because I see what you do. You're amazing. You're all over the, the globe, actually. And you're always on the road somewhere trying to help veterans. Um, and you, you know, you, your resume is amazing. So I would just ask you, um, to commit to, let's, let's get V A B funded. I'm going to make it an issue on, um, on my, uh, budget requests. But I've also, I'm going to, you know, and I know you may have a, a problem with it, but I, I would bring up your own agency that you can't do what, you, you know, you, you can't reach your potential, uh, by not having, uh, enough resources. And you don't. And you don't, you know that, you've admitted that, you know that you can't do outreach. You know, and we're, we're trying to scrounge money, we're talking, we're not, we're talking thousands, we're not talking millions. So I think, let's both commit to asking the mayor, and I'll ask him. You have more to lose than I do in asking and, and, and demanding, but I think it's got to get to that point. If we're gonna make VAB viable, make it, their lives a little easier, give them a budget, give them where they could, you know, and you could administer the budget if you want, I mean, if that's, if you think that's a requirement, then fine. But I think we need to step up, both of us. Let me, let me get it, how does the DVS measure the effectiveness of the, of the VAB in advising the commissioner on key issues affecting veterans and service members? So, you know, I know you said you don't, you didn't want to interfere, and they're autonomous, you wanted to keep them separate. But there are things that you, you know, as the structure of it, the, how many people are attending? Are you aware of attendance at all at, at these, I know you're on the, the hearings, or at least the VAB meetings. But are you aware, how many people are, are participating? I mean, how many public, how many veterans are on the call who are not board members? What's the attendance? Has it been dropping off? Are you gauging any of this? Do you see the, and I'll ask VAB this, but are you seeing a drop-off? You know, and what can we do to improve that?
I, I think that it's been a steady number of attendees. If you exclude Veterans Advisory Board members, you're talking about less than twenty or so who are attending regularly. There was a spike when we had the two thousand twenty-two situation where there was the, the threat to close the hospitals as far as the VA hospitals in Brooklyn and Manhattan and the clinic in Staten Island. That's when we saw, you know, the numbers surge. But typically, it's roughly, when you exclude VAB members, I would say, just to me, eyeballing as an attendee, I'd say you'd have no more than twenty who are coming from the community.
And Chair, just a comment on this topic. I think that where, where you and, and other council members could be really helpful in us is obviously those folks that attend are civically engaged. These are some of the most impressive veterans in New York City who are attending these meetings, and they have fantastic ideas. They have legitimate concerns. And, you know, to your point, I'm sure that there are other civically engaged people in other districts that if we got this information out via their city council office, I think we hope that we could recruit more of these civically engaged people who maybe are not identifying right now as veterans, but are pushing their advocacy in some other district that we don't know about. So we would like to work with city council in a greater way to actually advertise the community board meetings throughout every city council district, not just the wonderful committee that we have in city council.
But, but just, but you're aware, like, my question though, are you, you're aware of the attendance, that people are not showing up? So what do you do about that? Do you, do you question the board? You say, well, you know, this person hasn't showed up, maybe we should make a recommendation to the mayor that his appointment or, or the city council's appointment is, is not showing up, or they're not participating?
I want to, I'm sorry, I, I thought we were talking about attendance for the board members, or talking about attendance for the general public?
Yeah, the VAB meetings, because there's five a year, right? There's five, one in each borough, at least that's the idea.
I know one thing that we have done, I mean, just recently, when we had our last meeting at Barclays, we facilitated the, the meeting with the B, VAB. And, you know, we put a lot of thought into a centralized location, a place that garnishes attention. And, you know, we really thought that by, I mean, Brooklyn Nets was very kind to provide beverages and a space for us. It was beautiful. And so, you know, thinking about how do we make, maybe, how do we transform a, a community meeting from, you know, your traditional hall with some coffee in the back to, you know, Barclays Center and, and nice beverages? That really didn't draw it in, so we're, we're definitely trying things. It's just a matter of, again, all the good points that you guys are bringing up in terms of, how do we get in front of the people who are civically engaged?
So, yeah, but I, I, I'm glad that you're, I mean, that, if, if you get someplace that's great, like Citi Field in Queens, if you, if you got Citi Field and they're going to provide, they're gonna provide food and a nice atmosphere, that would, that should be a draw. Not only for the board members, which we want to include just veterans, the public, the community, to, to show up. And if we publicize that, I'm sure this will boost VAB.
I think this aligns with VA, set it up where we'll be able to put the word out exactly where the meeting will be well in advance. I think that will directly input, impact attendance.
What was the question? Okay, Councilmember Vicki Palladino has a question.
It's not so much a question as it is a statement. I've been serving on this committee now for quite a while, and we circle back to the same thing again and again and again. Five million dollars is not enough money, period. What do we get from the state? Not enough money, period. We want to know how do we reach our veterans? How do we reach our veterans on a five million dollar budget? We need a huge social media and media campaign. That costs money. We need to be able to inform our veterans that are not self-identifying in a very, very forward way. Hosting Barclays is great, but how do they know what's going on at Barclays? This is absolutely ridiculous. We need social media to reach our, our, our vets. It's as simple as that. It's an ad campaign, guys. What's, what's the mystery here? What is the mystery? We need to get to them, the best way to get to them is an ad campaign. You get people to change from drinking Coke to Diet Coke. I mean, we can get our veterans to self-identify if they know what they get at the end of the rainbow. There's a bunch of stuff that's waiting for them that's not there because they're not there. So let's, let's, let's call it what it is, more money, and let's get serious about doing a camp, an ad campaign to get these guys and girls out there, to make them aware of what's available. You could, you know, fire a shot into the, into the forest, who's gonna hear it? If a tree falls, who hears the tree fall? So it's the same thing. It's ridiculous. Get real with it and get serious with it, or this is a waste of time. Thank you.
So there's no question?
No, you didn't have a question.
All right. Councilmember Mamarota?
Thank you, Chair. So I just wanted to know, excuse me, how many, for your VAB, how many individuals are from each borough? Do you have like an idea or a count if everybody is represented?
We can get it from the, it's in the VAB report, as far as saying which borough has which person. Every borough is represented, but I can get that, it's in the report.
Okay, good.
I'm sorry, I don't have it on.
It's okay, it's okay. I'd like, I'm interested to see, you know, where the numbers are coming from. And so we, we do have the veterans...
Chair, he'll look it up, he'll look it up, he'll just go to NYC, okay, yeah, it's okay, we're getting it, it's right, it's on the, yeah, so we can tell you. Thanks, Ash.
So in total?
Yeah, you know...
That's right.
Sorry, keep going, sorry, yeah. He'll look that up, yeah. He'll look that up, wow.
So we do host the veterans' agency at my office. We don't have a good turnout. How do we get people to, like, how do you suggest for me as a councilwoman, when we do have these services come to the office, how do you suggest that we get the outreach? Because I don't want to waste your, your time and resources. I mean, it's great if it only, if we do outreach to one person that does come in to at least get, get some kind of help. But like, how do you suggest that we advertise for this or like connect with my community?
There's all the traditional advertising, but it's the things that your comms team already knows. For us, what we're looking to do is by April, no later than April, have divided up our veteran contact info so that every council member has that information. And so that's also tied into what's going on as far as this, the new organization that has our Vet Connect contract, it's combined arms. And one of the other things I'll be able to do is take all of our information and disaggregate it. So we're able to say, here are all the veterans in your district, so it can help you be able to better touch that group, those folks. Right now, we have at least four hundred, a hundred and forty thousand, so our veterans' contact info. And, you know, that doesn't include data from the state, from state agreements that we recently signed. And so I'm hoping that when it's all said and done, we have close to two hundred thousand veterans' info broken up into, you know, fifty-one different buckets, as far as being able to export and get it out. Our goal is to get it to you in April, especially as you've got the lead up to Fleet Week, Memorial Day. So my hope is that you've at least got a pool to say, okay, I know who, now I know who ninety to ninety-five percent of my veterans are out in Thrark, that go in my region.
So would be, it would be like email addresses and stuff like that?
It'll be email, it'll be cell phone, it'll be physical address. It'll be, we want to, we want to get you the best info that we can get you on this, Madam Councilwoman. So I'm hoping that can help, because you already know all the other things. We're talking about a group that is not identified.
Right.
And so we want to get this information to you all sooner than later, so as soon as we're able, want to start pushing it out so that that can help amplify your ability to do outreach.
Well, thank you.
And on that note, you know, you guys have heard us, one of our top legislative priorities at every local, at every level is data sharing agreements. Data sharing agreements go such a far away for us, especially with the limited budget that we may have on marketing and outreach and things. And so you'd be surprised or not surprised at all, given your experiences sitting up there, that, you know, government doesn't always share their information with one another from the federal and state level. And we've been trying to support legislation that would make that more seamless and support our agency in able to collect this information and this idea of no wrong door approach to government. So if they go into any office, that we or the State Department of Veteran Services are going to be aware of it so that we can help our council districts and our state assembly districts and state senate districts engage with veterans and educate them about all the things that we're talking about here today. So it is really important to us when it comes to outreach and engagement. But it comes down to the data and the marketing budget, as Vicki had pointed out, Councilmember.
Good, thank you.
Just in, in outreach for the veteran resource person coming to your office, you talk about once a month. I, I would work with the, the local posts in your district and notify the commanders and just say, you know, we have this service, it's, you know, right over here, and it's, you know, the day of, of the month that you're, you have that person. Just put that out as a regular, and it's always the same, same day of the...
Not really sure.
It's not really, okay. Well, just started, so what I would do is just try to reach out to the post commanders, and that seems to work. Because that, then they, they're in touch with their members and you start getting more people coming in. So once it gets a foothold, you'll, you'll have a line, actually, so that, that's, that'll work. But also, but you said, Commissioner, that you, you do email for the veteran resource person coming into the council offices? Do you, do you send out?
Yeah, just most recently, I mean, we have...
You send out fifty-one?
This is the case, when we have someone, so he'll speak to, you can speak to Councilman John Zhuang and what that, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'll speak on two examples, one that was highly effective and one that is work in progress. So as the Commissioner said, these data sharing agreements are critical for us to get what information we know to the council members who are partnering with, with us for veteran resource centers. One of this, well, the example of this going really well was the Borough President Donovan Richards' office. We were able to conduct that data sharing agreement, and you may have noticed, but veterans, like myself, received direct mail campaigns directly from the Borough President's office about veteran-specific events. So I personally saw a difference in just engagement from the BP's office. Councilwoman Zhuang and our partnership with her, when it came to her district, we had a significantly lower number of veterans' data, right, smaller geographical area. And so we were able to commit, submit a data transfer to their office where we provided them all of the veterans that we knew about that were in the district. And we gave them about, you know, two or three weeks or more to engage with them, to prepare them, to, for the, for our staff to come on a specific day. You know, it wasn't as effective as we hoped, but we are talking about a very small cohort of veterans in a very specific district. But over time, we believe that this is going to be a, a great asset to city council members and our partnership with these veteran resource centers. And we do intend to conduct the same data sharing agreements with all of you and the rest of the city council as we receive more of the data. So it's something that in 2025, it's a top priority of ours to be able to give this information to you and all the city council members.
And how many veterans do you, do you have, I mean, off the top of your head, how many veterans do you have their, their email addresses? And they're, it's working, do you know that, that you communicate with them? Do you have any?
For everyone, our, our entire?
The whole city?
The whole city? To Commissioner, you ask?
This is where, this is where at one hundred and forty thousand is the count?
Yeah.
As far as what?
You have emails for a hundred and forty thousand veterans?
Yes, a hundred and forty thousand, we're working to get that number up. We estimate that it'd be north of two hundred thousand veterans in the city. My personal estimate is somewhere between two hundred and thirty, two hundred and fifty thousand. It's so many because a lot of the guardsmen and reservists who never served on active duty are not counted by the feds. So like, the census will say a hundred and forty, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, census says, yeah, we have a hundred and forty thousand in reality right now. So the numbers are higher than what the feds say they are.
Yeah, and Chair, when Commissioner Holden took the position of Commissioner, that number that we had touches on for contact information, I think was around three thousand at the time.
Yeah, somewhere around three, five thousand, so we've gotten, we've done, we've been working to...
This is what we've been doing since...
So you went from three thousand to a hundred and forty thousand?
And we're trying to get, it's a lot of things we're doing to get at.
That's an accomplishment. But if we could do, do you have the budget to do emails to a hundred and forty thousand?
We could always do more with more.
And it's not just about the emails.
No, I'm asking, this is a very specific question. Do you have the budget to email fifty, you know, fifty-one, let's say, about these fifty-one veteran resource sessions in each council member's office? Can you help, because that, that goes a long way. We can have somebody sitting there, a veteran resource person from DVS, sit there the whole day, and if nobody's showing up, it's a waste of our resources. So to, to publicize that to the hundred and forty thousand, we would get a lot of people, a lot of veterans, it stands to reason. But do you have the budget for that?
Before?
Yes or no, yes or no?
Well, I wanted to talk about something else.
No, no, don't, no.
We don't have the budget to touch these people, establish relationships, to call out, but I just think it's beyond email. It's really about, and mind you, you've got so folks, three out of four who did not self-identify. So you reached out to many people who now, who have been in the shadows by design, so it's about luring them out. And so it's a complicated thing. We don't have the money to really establish a relationship like that with as many people as...
That's really sad, that we can't even, let's forget about the US mail, we can't even mail notices, but we can't even email.
No, it's not about the email though, Mr. Chair, it's about whatever will be most effective for that particular veteran.
Well, email is, email works. It's, it's established, it's for decades, we've had it.
What I'm saying is not everyone, it's almost like...
I know, I know, but a hundred and forty thousand, let's say half of them are working or they check their email. That, that goes a long way into reaching out, not only to self-identify, but what's available to each veteran that, that down the block, they live down the block from a council office, that they can go and get their, get some answers and get some programs and get some, you know, communicate with the VA, help them, you know, maneuver. So this, we're not talking, we're talking about a few hundred dollars it would cost you to do that.
So we have MailChimp, it's a question of, how do you do something when someone opts into receiving that email so we're not in a position where it goes directly to junk or spam? And so that's why it's, it's bigger than email, to me, it's...
I know, but, but my question is, how many have you verified that they're willing, they opted in for email from your office, let's say? Do you have a number on that?
I'll just speak to the, for our, not everyone opts into receiving our newsletter, for instance, we have roughly ten thousand newsletter subscribers, about twenty-five percent. So, but it, you know, and only about twenty-five percent open that on a given week. It's just, what I'm saying is to get at the, what undergirds what you're saying, speaking deeper than email, it takes a large amount of resource to really establish that relationship, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and Chair, if you'd like, we can always conduct a data sharing agreement with council. And then if you guys could support us in any type of direct mail campaign, we could provide the, the data to do so for what we...
Yeah, but ju, just if you can look up your database and see how many can you help to, and, and we'll, I'll certainly talk to the mayor about increasing the budget for, you know, emailing, you know, getting the resources in DVS. Because we, we were able to, you know, we, we, we made a, a small step last year in last year's budget. We need to make a giant step this time, because this, this is a very important issue that our veterans are not being served in New York City to the fullest extent that they could be. And when, and it's, it's partially on both, both agencies, it's your agency and the city council to fix it. And, you know, unless we can communicate, if we can't even communicate with our veterans, that's a big problem.
Well, Chair, if you're doing any print ad, print direct mail campaigns, we'd love to partner with the council here to provide you guys with what information we have, so that you can send those mailers out on our behalf.
And, or just a reminder to the council members to put veterans' issues in their newsletters. Accordingly, we get like, I guess we get two a year, and you could even do more, but we also, we do blast emails. So just piggyback, you know, again, it's, it's sad that we have to do this, but anything we could do to, to get the word out. Because government, I mean, New York City government is notorious, they have great programs, they just don't know how to sell it. They don't know how to advertise it, they don't know how to get it out to people. So it becomes a waste then, that we put all this money into it and very few people are taking advantage of it.
I think you're serious doing that more, like, this past January first, I emailed personally all of our council members, you know, on... Like this past January first, I emailed personally all of our council members, you know, on, on New Year's Day just to kind of touch base. So you'll see us trying to communicate directly more with council members.
Yeah, but you know the way that works. You gotta keep, you know, we get like ten thousand emails from the office. And sometimes when there are big issues, we get a lot of spam that goes through. So it's actually, you gotta be persistent and it's gotta keep coming. And gradually it'll catch on. But if every, and I'd like, I'd like to know a count at one point, maybe we'll do it. I'll ask you this at a, at a future hearing. How many offices, and you could ask your DVS resource people, are they busy in each office? And which offices are not that busy? And which, what can we do to increase the attendance at that particular, let's say, half the council offices? I know Vicky Palladino, you've done the veteran resources like, like twice, twice a month you used to have. Now, now we only get once a month because...
And that was a huge disappointment to the people who come to my office.
Right.
Because they really were counting on Tanya twice a month. So it was, now that it's down to once a month, I'm telling you, she stays sometimes till six o'clock.
Yeah, she's busy. She, I had the same resource person in my, Tanya's great.
She's amazing.
But when, we had, we were the only two council members that had it.
Right.
We had twice a month. And then when they, the council funded it for all fifty-one offices, we lost a day. And that did hurt us, but we're willing, you know, we're willing to share. But it is a problem. And, but our, you know, both of our offices were very busy. Tanya was always working extra, actually. She wouldn't take a lunch sometimes.
No.
She, she, because she couldn't. But that's why we need to focus on, if you could look at the fifty-one and do a survey with the council offices, are they getting veterans coming in?
And Chair, and Councilwoman, we wanna just thank you guys for being the trendsetters here that got us to where we are today.
Well, no, but thank you for, it was your, your ideas to have that person twice. And that was, that was a godsend. It really was.
We will be reaching out to, to your offices for your guidance and support on how we best, how the VFW will best roll out this Veteran Resource Center. Because to your astute point there, we certainly do not want to be using city council funding to send somebody to an office that they're not going to see anyone for the day.
Right.
And so whatever your experiences have been in how you've made a very successful Veteran Resource Center, we're gonna have to mirror that same success and teach the other city council members how to do what you guys have done. So you'll be hearing from us and, and VFW over the next month or two.
Also, I had to answer Councilmember Maroto's question as far as how this breaks out right now. So thirteen members total for the VAB, twelve seats filled currently. It's, four seats are Queens, three seats are Manhattan, two seats are Brooklyn, two seats are Staten Island, one seat is Bronx. So once again, four seats Queens, three seats Manhattan, two seats Brooklyn, two seats Staten Island, one seat Bronx.
Okay, well, thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Jason. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
For your testimony. We're gonna call on the Veterans Advisory Board now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Council.
Thank you so much.
Mercedes Elias?
Elias.
Elias, okay. You're the Chair of the VAB.
Yes.
And Ryan Graham is the?
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair. Okay. So we thank you for, do you have something to read or do you?
I do.
Okay, first, all right. So we'll, we'll start with that.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Mercedes Elias and I'm a US Marine Corps veteran, currently serving as the Chair of the New York City Veterans Advisory Board. With me is Ryan Graham, US Air Force veteran, who serves as the Vice Chair for the Board. I've served as a member of the VAB since 2020, serving as Secretary of the Board for three years prior to taking over as Chair last year. During this time, both the VAB and DVS have evolved significantly to address the needs of the veteran community throughout New York City. The members of the VAB are a true representation of diversity, having served in conflicts ranging from the Vietnam War to the conflicts in Iraq and Afghanistan. We represent the five boroughs and work in a variety of industries, ranging from finance to nonprofits and include small business owners. While the Board is representative of the veteran community, there is work to be done to improve the efficiency and validity of the Board. The Commissioner previously listed the issues with the appointments and selection of Board members, and I wanted to expand a bit upon this. Leadership within the VAB is not involved in any process for members being appointed to the VAB. We're simply notified after the members have been appointed in order to include them on upcoming sessions. The Board's diversity in age, location and industry, among so many other variables, is something which should be considered when appointing new members to the Board. It's logical that we should have input regarding potential candidates seated on the Board to ensure we maintain an accurate representation of the community that we serve. In addition, there have been members of the Board who have been inactive in their involvement, and there is no course of action possible to remove and replace these Board members. There are several constituents who are interested and willing to sit on the Board, who I am certain would participate, engage and advocate for the veteran community. Term limits would hinder some of the institutional and historical knowledge of our older members to specifically come to mind who are present at every single meeting, unlike some of our newer members who have not attended meetings in years. The goal of our public sessions is to hear from the community on pressing issues impacting veterans within New York City. Engagement varies across each meeting, and we've worked over the years to streamline the focus of our public sessions to cover the charter areas of DVS. This ensures brevity and clear communication to our constituents regarding the responsibilities of DVS and helps to ensure we can follow up on specific action items discussed during these sessions. During my tenure on the VAB, a significant issue with the proposed closing of VA facilities during the last Asset and Infrastructure Review Board. As the Commissioner mentioned, we will be working as a CBEB at the federal level. In doing so, we're helping to be more proactive in our approach to the data collection and utilization of local VA facilities so that we're prepared for the next errors report, which significantly impacts the veterans within our communities. Working with the VA directly in these sessions will help to secure funding at the federal level for initiatives we want to address going forward. I believe that consistency in both communication on subjects covered and the location of future public sessions will help to increase engagement, which has continued to improve participation during my time at the VAB. At the same time, we need active participation from our elected officials and constituents need to see action taken on items discussed during these public sessions. A frequent issue we've worked with DVS over the past few years is the need for data and accountability when it comes to assessing issues raised from veterans within the community. This helps the department showcase their efficacy while at the same time helps the VAB to validate issues raised during the public sessions. While there's been significant progress made toward tracking data on veterans seeking assistance through DVS, we believe there is insufficient tracking tools to monitor if issues or cases have been officially resolved. Currently, there is tracking for referrals to other agencies, but there is not a feedback loop on resolution for these issues. DVS is currently addressing this by identifying a new vendor to help with, via their Vet Connect system. This is something that we will continue to monitor over the next year as the new implementations take effect. I wanted to address some of the issues presented here today. The first being the update of the information for VAB on the website. This has been a continuous issue over the past few years, and we frequently mention the need for a liaison to be codified to the VAB to reduce the amount of administrative errors for something as easy as updating the website. Second, I have served on the Board where there was a contentious relationship with DVS and the current relationship where we work much more harmoniously together. The codification of responsibilities is not for anything significant regarding legislation or significant actions taken by the VAB. In our previous reports, this was for simple items such as the location of public sessions, who is managing the recording of meetings, et cetera. I do not believe that this would create a conflict of interest regarding the independent nature of the VAB. This also references our previous recommendations to assign personnel to help with administrative items. Work studies will not help to appropriately address this since work studies are temporary and the goal is for continuity of information throughout various terms on the VAB. These are but a few of the continuing issues we're addressing as we work with DVS to create a city where veterans want to return after their time in military service. We believe there's been significant growth and traction that DVS has been able to achieve over the past few years. However, we do believe there is still significant work to be done. We look forward to continuing to work together with both our elected officials and the team at DVS.
Thank you, Chair. Ryan, do you have something, testimony to read? Okay. We're gonna ask you some questions, though. So, so when you, you select a location to have the meeting, it's five a year.
Mm-hmm.
You get no budget for refreshments?
Nothing.
Eating bottles of water?
Nothing. So most of the time, if we host it at the legions, the legions will pay out of pocket. If we work with local universities, the universities will use their budgets to pay for it. So we don't have any sort of budget allocated to us.
So for five meetings a year, and I assume you don't get charged, or DVS doesn't get charged for the hall, the meeting place?
No. Normally, it is our members that are participating, members of the legion or the FWs, and they get it gratis through the VSO.
So what, what would you say, if you had a budget, would it make life easier for the Board?
It would make life easier. The issue that the DVS referred to about the Zoom was when we had the errors, the meeting with the errors report with the two people that represented the VA, both the Bronx facility, Manhattan facility, there were over a hundred members present on that call, which Zoom you have to pay for. My company hosted the previous Zoom account, which was a paid-for account. I left the company, so that was why there was an issue with needing to host Zooms that are over a hundred people in attendance. So something as simple as a Zoom account, that's what we need money for.
You get a Zoom professional, it costs, I don't know, it costs a few hundred?
It's not even, it's like fifty dollars.
We're not talking about a lot of money, though.
Fifty, something, something...
Yeah, but you don't have that account.
Nothing, no. So that's why we had to work with DVS to get them to pay for it. Because previously, when they used to run the WebEx, nobody on the DVS staff was monitoring the actual hearing. People were coming off mute, nobody was kind of silencing and letting the speaker talk. So then that's why we said, okay, we're gonna take care of it since nobody is really monitoring the sessions. Then when we took over and we started having a significant amount of attendees, that's when we needed to pay for the separate Zoom account.
So who, who actually monitors, I think it's Zoom, not WebEx anymore, it's Zoom?
Zoom.
So who monitors the Zoom? Like who's the, the person that does that?
I do.
You do it?
I do.
See, so there's not even somebody that you could have just monitor it, so you could take...
Cause you need to monitor the chat, especially when people submit in questions.
Yeah, but that's difficult.
Correct. When you're paying attention and making sure people don't come off mute. There was one instance where we had a previous VA secretary come. Somebody hacked into the meeting and took control over it, so you'd have to kick them out, things like that. So cybersecurity, monitoring the chat, submitting questions, yes, somebody needs to be there facilitating the meeting.
Yeah, it, it's really, it's really sad that you have to scrounge like this and, and not get support, basic support. We're not, we're talking, we're not talking, folks, we're not talking like a hundred thousand dollars. We're talking about a few hundred. So this is, this is the lack of commitment that we're seeing from the city. That they could, the city could make it easier, the council could make it easier, and the mayor's office could make it easier for you guys to run these, giving, let's say, a stipend for, for refreshments.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how, what would, what percentage of your members, I mean, I remember the meetings that I was on, there was like a few in the room, but then most people were on Zoom. Is it, has it changed at all?
For the VAB members or the actual public?
The VAB members.
The VAB attendees, it's normally, I would say, a third to if half at best per meeting, public sessions.
So a third, you said a third or on remote?
Oh, in person, a combination, in person, remote.
All right. But how many attendees is the average for the V, for the VAB?
In person, it does depend by borough because if, let's say, one of our members in Staten Island is very active with his legion, so his whole legion will attend, whereas if we do it somewhere like Queens or the Bronx, perhaps not, but twenty, roughly twenty.
All right. Now, in your 2023 annual report, you recommended increasing inter-agency cooperation regarding vendors' preferences for veterans. Could you elaborate on what specific actions you envision the city taking to ensure veteran street vendors' concerns are heard and addressed?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question once more?
Yeah, and you want me to go, if it was the 2023 annual report, you guys recommended, VAB recommended, increasing inter-agency cooperation regarding veterans' preferences, or I'm sorry, vet, vendors' preferences for veterans. So, you know, what specific actions do you envision the city taking to ensure veteran street vendors, their concerns are heard and addressed? Cause we've, we've heard this over and over again. The vendors are not respected, the, the police are issuing them tickets unfairly. They don't even understand the law, talking about the police. So they're being, they're being treated, they're supposed to have different locations and corners that they could operate on. Doesn't seem to trickles down to the police or, you know, or even our city agencies. So your recommendations are, you, you wanted some preferences. You know, some of these, these laws upheld and, and the veteran, the veteran vendors being treated with respect. Has there been any movement on that? And, cause you're, this is from 2023 we're talking about. Do you see anything changing?
So I think the introduction of having the veterans on the actual board and being represented is a significant movement. Because right now, a lot of what has been passed has been through the veteran, or the Vendor Advocacy Project, which is nonprofit and does not include veterans. So we need to get veterans included in the actual legislation separately. What we, what Ryan wanted to refer to was the designation as an SDVOB at the city level. Because currently, you can, you wanna expand on that?
Sorry, I haven't. Issue, oh, here I go. Yeah, I, one of the biggest issues is obviously MWBEs, they get preference for different things, including procurement opportunities. But they don't, but they're, but SDVOBs, service to disabled veteran owned businesses, they, it's non-existent here in the city. But yet, up in Albany statewide, there is that designation. And, I mean, outside of my, my role on the VAB, obviously, some of you already know what I do on the policy front. I've constantly put it in, it's, it's on the VFW's agenda to put it in there, but we, I'll tell you outright, we don't get that much support off of the city council side, minus all of you. You're very proactive.
Well, the fact that we didn't, we didn't even appoint, we have a vacancy for, for years now. And that, that kind of speaks volumes at this point of, of the city council, of which I'm a member, that, that the vacancy hasn't been filled. I would even, you know, I think this committee should have some input, and we do have some input on, on appointments. At least we could recommend to the Speaker, but ultimately, it's the Speaker. But I think that you guys should, you mentioned this, Chair, in, in your testimony, that you should have something to say, you should have recommendations that are honored. Not just, oh, this, we need to, you know, we should have, you know, this person would be good for the Board and then nothing happens. Have you done this, by the way? It's a good question. Have you recommended someone and it just fell on deaf ears?
No, we haven't. We know there have been issues when it comes to the investigation port of the appointment. And we've talked to constituents that had been recommended, and then I don't know what happened politically or through the investigation where they didn't end up getting it.
I'll make a commitment, if you, you give me some names, and not just one. If, if, if some people aren't showing up, then we need to replace them, both on the mayor's side and the council's side. But if you feel that, that we have a vacancy now in the, in the city council's side, that you have, if you give me a few names, I'll put it forth to the Speaker and, and follow up. That we'll try to get an immediate appointment. an immediate, uh, appointment, because a- actually, you know, having less members, that, that's counterproductive. It's, it's, it's hard enough getting everybody together on a specific date, and not to fill the entire board, uh, that's unacceptable. So, um, you know, um, let, let's say you're, you're twenty, I'm gonna go, I'm going to the 23 report, are you working, you guys are working on the 24 report?
Yes.
Uh, you'll have that when? When do you think that'll?
First draft should be out next week.
Oh, okay. And then you, you had the board, a vote on it, and then?
They come back, everybody comes back with their edits, iterations, additional information. There are a number of items that will be new, um, that weren't addressed previously, that have been brought up numerous times during the year.
So, in, in, I'm gonna go through a few questions here, and then, in 23, your 23 annual report, you, um, you also call for providing funding and resources for student veterans, um, and for DVS to work with student veteran represent, uh, representatives to attract and recruit veterans to New York City colleges. You know, what, has there any, any movement on that, or any practical steps or specific?
There has been at the CUNY level. What we've seen is strong presence of student veterans at the private universities such as Fordham, Columbia, NYU. We think there's a lot more focused effort in those military veteran departments, and CUNY, just the structure of how it's set up in each of the veteran offices, and one of the board members here can expand upon it, did he, did he walk out?
Yes.
Oh, Josh, one of our board members can expand upon it, cause we did discuss this earlier, if you wanna talk about the way that the CUNY, um, veterans' offices are set up separately to the private universities.
Hi, Chair, uh, Joshua Sukal, uh, current student, uh, CUNY, John J., staff member for Hope for the Warriors. Uh, I'd like to say this, um, throughout my endeavor in the CUNY realm, I've seen a lot of uncertainty, mainly on the main office of the CUNY Office of Veterans Affairs. I have no idea what they do, but I'll tell you one thing, the constituents at BMCC, John J., Kingsborough, Queens College, those military directors, they work, and they work very well. I can honestly say, the school system and the school-going veteran is probably, it's probably the worst thing you wanna do, after you get out of the service and go to school and try to make it, but these military directors, specifically those ones I mentioned, they advocate, they help, they support, they do more than I can do in a day, and I try to work with every single one of them.
So, are there, are there colleges in CUNY that are not stepping up? That they're not, their offices are non-existent, let's say?
Non-existent, you can say.
They're, if you, what I would like to, if you can communicate with my office, which unit, cause I'm from CUNY, uh, I, I taught for over forty years in CUNY, at New York City College of Technology. I'd like to know what they're doing, and then whether some of the other units, based on your experience, like what a, what schools, what campuses are doing their job, and what, what, you know, what, uh, colleges are not doing, anything, or very little for veterans.
I can definitely get you that.
So, that's where, if you can, uh, we'll talk after the hearing, but, um, that's important to me, and, and certainly important to the, the endeavor here. But we need, we need something, you know, like your recommendations, and this is going back to 23, this is not last year. So, if we're not getting answers from 23, then what do you guys, what do we hope to accomplish here? So, we need, you know, we need some of these addressed, um, and CUNY is one of them, CUNY is one of them that I could actually talk to the chancellor about, uh, and, um, and try to get some answers for you.
And I think, uh, just to add on that, one of the significant barriers to student veterans coming specifically to CUNY schools is that CUNY does not have housing at a reduced amount similar to the private universities. Private universities do offer that reduced, um, rent for students, the CUNY schools do not, so it's very difficult for them to afford being able to live here, going to school full-time on just the GI bill, when their rents take over half of the GI bill cost. So, that is something significant that, you know, we would need to work with different departments to help try to address, but that is a significant barrier to student veterans coming to, uh, New York City.
Also, um, I don't know why the clock was on, we don't need the clock on. The, um, you know, in your 2023 annual report, you recommended that the mayor's administration and the city council provide DVS with funding to assess, evaluate, and document the impact of DVS programs, um, because you're an independent body, I, I'd like that information, that helps us, that helps this committee. So, from your perspective, um, what key performance indicators or data points should be, you know, should be actually prioritized?
I, you know, going back to my statement, the biggest issue that's come up repeatedly in the public sessions is the actual follow-through of the complaints or any of the inquisitions filed, because there's tracking of what kind of inquisition, where it comes from, what the subject is, and if it was referred, but then that's where the cases for the veterans falls off, and there's no follow-up, there's no feedback loop back to the veterans saying, this is what we took care of, did your issue get resolved? There always seems to be excuses like, oh, well, there's HIPAA, we can't find out about it, oh, that's out of our purview. You don't need to get into the specifics if a condition was treated appropriately, did, did it get treated, yes or no? There doesn't need to be any specifics.
Yeah, yeah.
Was the case closed out? And that is the biggest gap in information right now.
Welcome to government.
Yes.
Well, let, let's talk about, um, city employment. So, again, in your, I'm referring to the annual report from 2023, you suggested creating a citywide veteran employment program, great idea, uh, and making veterans a protected class for hiring preferences, which is, that's something we could do in, in legislation, I think. So, um, and we have some, we have some that this committee will hear, some bills, but how do you see VAB working with DVS and the city council to advance these goals? Like, um, from your 23 report, what are the biggest, I mean, I, I know what the biggest barriers are, um, it's always about follow-through, bureaucracy in government, getting these programs through, but, like, I would, I would ask you, what can we do to work together with your, with VAB, with DVS, and, and certainly the city council, to actually get some employment programs and, and get priorities for veterans? Like, where, what, what areas of, of employment do you see us being the most effective?
Well, I think for the city council, that first barrier to just getting them as a protected class, I think directly, the DVS and VAB can work together, because we are aware of those organizations that are working to get veterans into skilled labor jobs, into computer IT jobs, there are a lot of organizations that, between both of our collective energies, we can get connected to the city agencies, we just need them to get that preference to know that they're going to be able to be employed by the city, and then what?
Yeah, getting a preference, but.
That's it.
And again, to be specific, like, that would be nice if we can get a preference in, in certain, I'm, I'm not sure we're gonna get every, every, uh, employment, uh, every job description on the, on the priority list, but let's say, where do we start? Like, what, veterans coming out of the service, what are they most good at? What are they, you know, like, they're better, uh, at, at certain skills?
It's really, it's, it's really.
Are they better in leadership?
Here's the thing, it, it goes across industry, across skill sets, across all sorts of jobs, because just because somebody did a job in the military doesn't even mean that they wanna do that job in the civilian sector. What we're saying is that there are organizations set up helmets to hard hats, you know, helmets to education, the, the city needs to get connected to those agencies, because right now, New York City is not known as a place where veterans can transition, get gainful employment, and also afford to live. So, just making sure that those city agencies are aware, but the city agencies have to be on board with actively wanting to recruit veterans, and that's where we need advocacy to tell these.
Yeah, we talked about, we talked about with some of the unions, cause in Long Island City, there's a lot of unions that have workshops, and they have, um, apprenticeship programs, so I would think that's a good start, that's what I would recommend, that we start with apprenticeship programs and give our priority to veterans, where they can get the training. And, um, you know, when I visited some of these, um, some of the union shops, they did have a preference, they said, well, we'd love to have veterans come in, because they, many are, are already skilled at, at certain aspects of just life, rather than, than, than young people coming out of high school, where these veterans are actually, they have a discipline already, they have, they have training, uh, they have a work ethic, so that would be a, a plus, and that's how you could, we could sell it to, uh, employers, but certainly to unions, too, so I think that's where we could start.
Yeah, I just have to throw in there, um, Mercedes mentioned helmets to hard hats, it's a perfect example, uh, Local Three, they have a veterans' club out of the Belrose VFW, and those guys are really big, they run the numbers, so it's, it, it, well, what I've noticed, it really comes down to the grassroots level, um, VSOs especially, um, but yeah, and, and not only that, say in the, um, if you're going into that sector, say, say you might go into finance, Mercedes might know more about this, I believe there's, uh, what, Veterans on Wall Street, and there's another one, I can't remember what it is, uh, corporate partners?
American Corporate Partners.
American Corporate Partners, so there's, there's the resources out there, it's just getting, uh.
Communication.
Exactly.
Yeah, but we, we should, uh, again, we, if we reach out to the private sector and, and say, do, you know, would, would they consider a program, um, to give preferences to veterans in hiring? I mean, that should, that should be, I think most companies would agree to that, we just have to facilitate it, so I think, um, that was one of your recommendations, which, um, now we need to act on it.
We just need help on the city's side, we just need help with the government agencies on the city's side.
You have.
To be a little bit more open.
All right. So, which, uh, which agencies are doing this, by the way? Do you know, off the top of your head?
Which ones aren't?
Uh, preferences for hiring veterans.
MTA, MTA is a preference for hiring, uh, I think also the bridge and tunnel.
MTA? Oh, Bridge and Tunnel, that's different.
Yep. Those are the ones that we know about, just off the top of our head.
Well, we'll, we'll try to, again, that should be a point of a hearing from this committee, and we can get some companies to come in and maybe, uh, get them to commit to, to, I, I'm sure, again, if a company can hi, you know, again, there's a lot of jobs that are, you know, they're unfilled at this point, there, there's, many companies need skilled workers, or at least competent, uh, workers, and they can't fill the positions. But there's others that, you know, they're, they're very competitive, but I think a preference to veterans should, I think most companies would agree to this, so, uh, that's, it's up to us. Again, I'm gonna go to your, your annual report from 23, um, on veteran treatment courts, because that, that during the pandemic was a casualty, uh, the veteran treatment courts, many of them didn't function, well, most of the courts didn't function during the pandemic, but, um, so, but in your 23 report, you recommended extending veteran treatment court, uh, court services to veterans regardless of discharge status, which I would agree with, I think most people would agree with, because there's reason maybe, um, they didn't get an honorable discharge.
Yeah, so.
And it could have, so, it could be service-related, so.
Yeah, so I actually did legal work in the Marine Corps, and I can tell you that there's an actual whole page where you talk about what benefits you have a right to based on the characterization of service when you separate. Now, if you look even now, and one of our members can talk about, even when you were homosexual in the military, you would have gotten, received a dishonorable discharge, now, a lot of those are being overturned, so we don't think that the characterization of service should be a barrier to getting assistance through the veteran treatment courts, just because sometimes it is subjective that a service member was separated, it could have been through drug use, it could have been through false allegations, there's a number of things, so we don't feel, just specifically with the veteran treatment courts, that your characterization of service should prohibit you from being able to adjudicate the case at that level.
Right, so, like, um, I think some of this requires legislative action, so I'd like some recommendations from the, uh, from, from the board, uh, as to what areas specifically we can, we can improve, and what legislation might we, we draft to make this a reality, because I think it's a very important point, that they did serve their country, and they had, they ran into some issues, whatever it is, and they actually, they're, they're probably the first ones that need the veteran treatment court, um, but we, what we found is that a lot of, it wasn't trickling down to NYPD, um, like, I'm in, I'm in constant contact with the Queens DA, um, because that's, that's my borough, and, you know, one of the cats has been outspoken on this and, and actually makes this a point, but some of the other boroughs, like, you know, weren't doing, even the veteran treatments courts for a few years during the pandemic, and we had a really, we had a hearing on this, and we found out that some of the boroughs weren't doing it, but they, I think they're all caught up now, but we do need, that, that should be a very important piece of legislation, if we can get that through, whether it's, it needs to be a state or a city, we'll, we'll work on that. Now, you, you mentioned, let's talk about the board appointments, cause we, we touched upon this, and you mentioned this, but the VAB, you have thirteen members, um, there, you know, we talked about the concerns and delay of appointments, uh, appointments. Could you describe your understanding of how the appointment process works? Like, you mentioned you should have something to say, I agree, um, and if you could talk about a process that you discussed, like, maybe for each, like, for the city council's side, you could send it either a letter or an email, whatever it is, of certain people that you feel are qualified, and it could be from various boroughs, and you do the same through DVS possibly for the mayor's side, um, we, we can actually advance it. So, let, let's come up with, like, if you think of an ideal process, and I think you said there, there's, is there one vacancy now?
There is one vacancy for, it was one of the new positions that opened up for caretaker.
And, and has, you know, like, and how's the attendance, though? Are there, are there members that, board members don't show up at all?
Yes.
There are?
Yes.
And what, what do you do about it? Do you?
There's no course of action.
There's no, that's why, that's why I suggested to codify it.
Mm-huh.
Like, we need some, that should be in the bylaws.
It makes a significant difference, even this past year.
How about you, how about you go back, cause I don't wanna interfere with your bylaws, I don't think the commissioner does either, but how about you come up with suggestions to the bylaws?
Yep.
You know, your first meeting, let's say, I'm not, I'm only suggesting, I'm not saying you have to do that, but, but let's, let's try to fix some of this, where we come up with a process, and if, if, one for appointments, the second one for people that are not really participating, and, and how do we, you know, do, I, I know the mayor's office could remove them, right? And so can the city council, uh, the speaker can, so, but we need to, we need some actual, um, language that maybe you can control some of that, like, if you feel that the person hasn't attended in two years, three years.
Which we have that data, it's tracked in the minutes.
Yeah.
So, we can tell you who hasn't.
Yeah, so if you could say, just put a, a couple of, you know, categories in the bylaws on how do we correct some of this, because it's not helping anyone there, have people just take up space. So, that was my other question, and, um, let, let's say, collaboration with DVS, I just wanna touch upon this, how effectively do you feel that your board, the, the VAB and DVS are working together to address veterans' issues, and are there examples where a better coordination could have resulted in improved outcomes?
I wouldn't say one specific example, I think.
Don't worry, the commissioner's sitting right there.
No, I'm looking at Ryan, if he had anything off the top of his head.
I know he said, he couldn't get any closer, but.
No, listen, again, it, the relationship has evolved, different members on the board have evolved, I talk to the commissioner very freely about negative things, about positive things, so I would say, again, I've been through a contentious relationship with the VAB, and we work much better now. Is the, is DVS going to do everything for everybody and fix every answer? No, but you have to just continuously be working on it, and I think right now, we do work together to say, okay, let's shift our focus, what's the priority, make sure that we get resources, if we don't have an answer, how are we getting answers? We do try to follow up in our executive sessions to say, these were the issues that were brought up the last meeting, where are we at with these issues now, to make sure that they're addressed in the public session? So, I think right now, we have a good path going forward. Is it something formalized in writing? No, but I think that there's no instance of us saying, hey, where are we at with each of these issues, that something hasn't been addressed or looked into, or we haven't been given an answer to. I think the only outstanding issue is the PFC Dwyer funds, that have continued to been delayed, 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 payments haven't been made, that's something that's beyond DVS's control, which we're saying, hey, can you work in our agency and talk to the council to see, can you bypass some of the process to get those funds to be allocated to DVS directly, so then that way, there's not this continuous delay? That's the one issue that has really stood out over the past. That's the one issue that has really stood out over the past year.
Yeah, that's been, that's been, that's citywide, actually, that uh the vendors not getting paid or programs. But eh, what I would like from, from uh, and again, to help us with evaluation of programs, what programs you feel should be funded? Um increase the funding and what programs are not working? And you've gotten a lot of complaints from your members, so that's the feedback that actually is very, very important and probably the, you know, that's, that's where the board can help us the most, like, where should, you know, because we're going into budget season now. So what programs should be enhanced? What programs should be double in size? Because they're really helping and there's a waiting list for, to get help for veterans. And what programs are not working, that you feel your members are complaining about, that they're not getting the help? Um so, you know, we constantly hear, when I go to the Board Navin, Board Navin U um Veterans Shelter, that they, they're not, they're not, they feel they're not getting good services, or they're not getting the mental health. We hear a lot, you know, we've heard that over and over again. It has improved though, we, we do hear, some of it has improved, but not all of it. But we need to know specifically what programs should be enhanced and vice versa. So um is there anything else that, you know, you guys will, you know, the VAB believes that it should be doing that is not currently um, we're not doing for veterans? Um or, you know, how do we strengthen DVS's efforts? So anything, any recommendations that I'd like to hear, uh and I'm sure the commissioner would like to hear, where you feel your members are all saying the same thing. If we're, we're hearing it over and over again, then we need to address it.
Well, you mentioned it earlier, Chair, um one issue that came up frequently throughout the year was the amount of funding that's going to immigrants compared to veterans. That was a big piece for a lot of veterans that they advocated for continuously, and that is something that you can bring to the attention uh especially during budgetary discussions. Um but otherwise, I think that a lot of this we can lay out in the two thousand twenty-four report for you, especially in specific actions that uh the board has asked for.
Councilmember Paladino, you have a? Okay.
Now that there's a change at the federal level, and we have a new president, do you see any more money coming our way? I mean, do you see an uptick that this is going to be a very good thing now for our veterans? And can we lean a little harder now on the federal government, knowing that they will be more responsive?
Well, that is our goal for participating as a CVEB. However, at the same time, they may, we, they may do away with the CVEB altogether. So it's a matter of how can we get in contact and get more communication at the federal level? Because even if it changes now, more or less, we need to continue to stay in the front and center of the staff at the VA. So then that way, even when the next president comes in, or the next, you know, slew of politicians comes in, we continue to be at the forefront saying that we are the model for other large cities to say how you can support actively the veterans. You work a little bit more on the political side.
Well, he's, he's the political guy.
Yeah, I just work in finance.
Right.
Well, policy. So technically, wearing the other hat, it's not supposed to be politics.
Right.
Um.
But it is.
Yeah, well, ultimately, and I misspoke earlier, I think, um it, eh, everything, it has to get down to the granular level, community boards. Uh I actually sat on CB ten with uh Joanne. Um and I actually, you know what, all I knew was what was going on in the Milvet community. But when I joined the board, I learned a lot. Actually, Joanne, I'm not, well, she's gone, I'm not blowing smoke her way, but between her and the chairwoman, Betty Bratton, they were fantastic. And I learned a lot about more of the community stuff, public safety, um transportation.
Is there a veterans committee on Board Ten?
Well, I was done with the board in twenty-twenty, but I believe not, but Betty was very good. She always targeted me out out of the fifty members of the board. Ryan, you got something to say? So I was like, no, not this time. Um but definitely having a committee on each board wouldn't be bad. Um and like I said before, I, I sort of misspoke. Uh I don't want to say all city council members, but like, I, well, I know Vicki, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Paladino, chairman, um you guys are very good. But majority of the city council veterans were at the bottom of the totem pole. If you look at the overall city budget, um we're just above community boards. Community boards are at the very bottom, they get like, each board gets around a million bucks a year to kind of fund their staff, their district, uh um people that basically run the boards. Um so it, it does say a lot. I look at the numbers, and it does say a lot. Um sometimes, you know, and I think getting veterans on the board, each board, it, it can work. Because what they'll do is they, they sort of start pressuring the council members to actually take action. I'm not gonna say which one, but where my specific VFW is located, I'm not even from that area. It, it's, it's a very, uh, it's not a great relationship. And but, but you know what, I look at other alternatives, the private sector, the New York Mets, Steve Cohen, his team, they've been fantastic. Um like I said, I could talk forever, but um, but yeah, that ultimately, what, what I'll say is I, I agree with quadrupling their, their budget. But Commissioner Hendon, he did make a point before when he said, you know, kind of guiding that funding to, towards organizations, say like the VFW and service officers uh to kind of help out with claims, that, that's usually where stuff happens at the, the ground level. Veterans, they come out, usually their first six months to a year, they're, they're in like no man's land.
Yeah, but Ryan, now's the time to make noise and to be the squeaky wheel. We need, we need every veteran to, to, to talk to their council member, to make this a priority, because it's not, you know, we're gonna miss the opportunity, this is gonna be my last budget in the council, to try to get some more funding for veterans and DVS and more programs. But when you're, when we don't have a, a ground swell, and we, we really need to coordinate that. Not only from the, the VAB, but also from just the DVS, from, from all members, uh all veterans around the city coming and testifying at the budget hearings. To, to get a piece, you know, a bigger piece of the, of the, uh, the budget for veterans, because it is lacking. And I brought that, I brought up the migrant situation, how our veterans are being, are sleeping on the street or in, in less than ideal conditions. While people who didn't serve our country, weren't even citizens, haven't been paying taxes because they just got here, they're getting hotel rooms. Uh that, to me, is, and that's what I used in, as some of the analogy last year, and it didn't work. Fell on deaf ears. I hope that the mayor, and I, again, I brought it up, and, you know, we had one hearing already on his uh, his budget. And um I wasn't very hopeful that I, I got through, because I got an answer that was totally unacceptable from him. So I'm gonna keep bugging him, but I need everyone.
Need support at the bigger level. I know we've had this conversation before, I, I, and I'll say it, the veterans community as a whole in New York City is very fragmented. Um so I mean, if, if there's an issue, say, veteran street vendors or uh homeless vets, if we want to hold a, you know, some sort of a press conference in the steps of City Hall, maybe you might luck, be lucky to get like twenty to thirty, but then when you have other bigger issues, say like um say like the uh, the influx of migrants or funding for um, I don't know, wha- whatever else, um you, you're gonna see hundreds of people. But it's, it, eh, that's, my, my opinion is, we really need to get down to the grassroots level.
But, but the commissioner mentioned this, and he mentions a lot at hearings, he, he mentions that our veterans are not self-identifying like the national average. I think we're, we're bu- way below. We're not for disability, we're, we're lagging behind for disability uh applications, or at least to try to get a percentage of our veterans to qualify for uh disabled veterans. We're not getting that either, we're lagging behind in that, so that's why the city, and I, I, I brought this up to the mayor, and I, I think I brought it up to the council a number of times, that we'll get, we'll get that money back, because if veterans get, if our veterans, New York City veterans, get more services um from the government, that they'll spend it in New York City. So the economy will improve, and it'll be a marked difference with a hundred, you know, how many, two hundred, hundred thousand veterans in New York City? Um you'll see a marked difference if they start getting their fair share of funding. So it's up to, eh, a small investment, we're not talking about a lot, a small investment by New York City into veterans will pay dividends, so. Um eh, and that, I have no more questions. Does anybody, Kate, thank you, thank you so much. You, you can't uh from.
Yeah, Ashton is a member.
Then you can come up, oh, you can come up then, yeah.
I just have one, I think, observation.
I just meant you can't sit there and say something.
Oh, that's fine, thank you so much, Chair.
All right.
And you have done such a tremendous job as the chair of this committee over the years, all the legislation you've sponsored to, to better the lives of veterans and their families is not falling on deaf ears, it's something that's resonating with the community, and I thank you for the effort.
Well, I, it's funny, I don't feel I made enough progress at all.
You are, you are, you're getting the conversation started, even your attempt to, to talk to the mayor, and as far as the VA, this is their role. The problem is that the veterans that we're trying to get in touch with aren't going to the VA. But if we can get them there, then suddenly a whole new opportunity can open. They can find out about eligibility, they can be empowered by learning about benefits that they might be eligible for. And if that happens, then suddenly you can take some of these veterans off Medicaid, and they start getting the, the money from the federal government, which is a good thing for the city. And that's what we're missing here, and I think.
Well, that's a great argument, but it's a catch twenty-two, if we can't communicate with them, if we don't have a budget that we can communicate.
But we can, we can, we can do it through uh communicating with other veteran advocates, with their families, with people who work for socia- social workers across the city, with empowering programs like the Vet-to-Vet Cafes that we do, just to get people together and talk, talk about end-of-life benefits. A lot of veterans don't know about, and the VA did a huge campaign last September, because only like uh twenty percent of veterans are even aware of these benefits. You can get buried for free in a national cemetery and have a full military burial. People don't know about these things, and that's a huge cost-saving, and your spouse can be buried with you. It's, it's such a wonderful, beautiful thing for, for those who are patriotic and want to go back to that time of their life when they served and end the same way.
What, tell, tell me, um, and again, it could be Mercedes, you could mention, what, what is the VA? How does the VA communicate with veterans?
Eh, it's very, eh.
I mean, you're, you're, you're both veterans, so.
Mail, snail mail, they'll do you a million.
But you do get, you do get mailings on programs like what he just mentioned?
Programs, even if you have an appointment, you're gonna get three letters in the mail, which just go to waste and trash, which for younger generation, it's really bad to be that wasteful. Um but even older, older veterans don't even use technology and emails, so it's very difficult. So to, in my opinion, and Brian, Phil, say if you feel any different, the VA is just there and it's just like, just come to me. There's no, there's no push of information.
VA doesn't do your, uh, let's say, doesn't send you a mailing to say, fill out this so we can have your current address, your email, you know, what?
No, it's just when you, when you get benefits, you're assigned to a specific VA, and they have to have your update, up-to-date information, but other than that.
But you don't get that.
Yeah, actually, I get a ton of cards in the mail. Uh one of them I had to uh, over the past month, renew my card. I u- utilize Brooklyn VA. Uh I, I definitely utilize it, it's a great facility.
I utilize it, but, yeah.
Um but I, I do have to point out one thing that I find interesting, I, I'm, I'm very inquisitive, I like to ask a lot of vets, so I notice a lot of the post-nine-eleven vets served in Iraq, Afghanistan, anywhere in GWAN. Uh they tend to rely more on, on their private providers. One of the members of my post, he actually works for Northwell Health, so why not utilize Northwell Health? Uh but the VA is actually good. You don't have any copays, nothing. My wife, she's actually on Champ VA. We're about to get her set up through, uh, I forgot what it's called, Champ VA, over on Twenty-third Street, so she can get care there just in case something happens.
But it still takes a long time to get an appointment, I mean, month, month, if not multiple months at a time, so.
Well, thank you both, thank you so much, and uh we're gonna move on to the public now, public testimony. I'm gonna open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding, and that the quorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Uh further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms uh who are standing up here or in the back for inclusion in, in the hearing record.
I'm gonna ask you after.
Okay. If you wish to speak at today's uh hearing, please fa- fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms in the, in the back and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have three minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, New York City Veterans Advisory Board. We will hear all in-person testimony first, and then turn to testimony on remote Zoom. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. And I will now call on the first panel. Joe Bello. Mount Lacy. Okay, and Timothy Pena. Thank you. Joe, you could start.
Tessie. Um before I begin, I, I'd just like a point of information um and around transparency. Um I've heard testimony today by the commissioner and others about the uh, the VA's Community Veterans Engagement Board merging with the VAB. Um lo and behold, I happen to be the, the chair, or was the chair? I, I, all I can tell you is that in the prior administration, it was coming to an end, uh I had a conversation with the Veterans Experience Office down in DC, and they had let us know that, that everything was on hold because the administration might not be continuing the Veterans Experience Office. Now, if Commissioner Hendon was having conversations, I certainly would have appreciated a phone call from him to let me know what was going on, but I didn't get that. Part of the problem with that too is the CVEB is a federal entity, the VAB is a city chartered board. So you, I, I, I'm not trying to figure out how, are we adding the members onto the CVEB, which is something different? Or are we saying we're going to rewrite the law and kind of merge federally or locally the CVEB into the VAB? So I just wanted that point of information, because that's very confusing. So with that, Chairman Holden, members of the veterans community, thank you for the opportunity to testify. Uh under the city charter, the VAB's primary role is to advise the commissioner of the Department of Veteran Services on all matters affecting veterans. The board performs several additional functions, including community engagement, advocacy, and advisory and policy recommendations. While the VAB has grown over the years, including legislation in twenty-twenty-two, which expanded the membership, its effectiveness has noticeably declined. This decline has been particularly evident in the public engagement sector. Having served on the board for several years and had a hand in writing the twenty-twenty-three report, I wanted to share my thoughts on some of the challenges. Challenges facing the VAB. Although the VAB is mandated to operate as an independent entity, it heavily depends on DVS for both logistical and operational support. This support includes assisting, assisting with meeting locations, which, to be clear, is not in the city charter. So there have been instances where the commissioner has turned around and said, look, the agency is not interested in helping the VAB find a location, and we've had to find locations by ourselves. But this is something that's not in the city charter and go, actually goes back to Lori Sutton. Um publishing.
Well, could, could you, so what are you suggesting?
I'm suggesting we're gonna have to um prob, and then I get further into it, we're gonna have to uh augment the legislation to where the, the, the DVS eh, a- absolutely has a hand in finding, particularly if, I mean, I know that they said they want to do it at VA locations, but um VA locations are gonna be quite challenging as well. So are we doing it at the St. Albans CLC uh out in St. Albans? Are we doing it in the Brooklyn Hospital? I mean, uh, we're, you know, Jason Lager, when he was here, testified about looking for central locations, so I'm curious as to where, where we're gonna find central locations for.
All right, I'm sorry, you can go over your testimony.
Thank you.
All right.
Um this support includes assisting with meeting locations, publishing board information, archiving minutes, videos, and reports on its website. Unfortunately, this reliance has resulted in issues such as delayed meeting notifications, missing minutes, no transcripts, unarchived videos, and outdated or incomplete member information on the VAB webpage, which I appreciate you bringing up, that they updated that, that site yesterday. Additionally, as the chair may recall, concerns were raised in twenty-twenty-two regarding the potential influence of DAS, DVS officials on council speaker appointments. Those concerns. Those concerns have not diminished. Finally, in recent years, many have observed VAB meetings being overshadowed by DVS presentations, leaving little room for meaningful local discussions. The meetings also seem to be constrained by informal two-hour time limits through video, with minimal efforts by the agency to address veterans' questions from one meeting to the next, and that's the agency, not VAB. These issues have significantly undermined transparency and trust in the board. To address these challenges and strengthen the VAB, I would propose a package of legislative actions for the committee to consider. Term limits. The lack of term limits on the VAB has stifled the introduction of fresh prospective ideas. While some board members have served for extended periods, others participate minimally. You've heard testimony on that. Further diminishing the board's overall effectiveness. I also wanted to point out that the Commissioner did testify that start and end dates for the members have no rhyme or reason. They are not uniformly staggered. But in the last introduction where we introduced the cold stop, it was the Commissioner that was pushing for these term limits and that appointees only serve the remainder of unexpired terms left by their predecessors. That's been a problem. I would propose legislation allowing new appointees to serve full three-year terms from the date of their appointment. This would ensure appointees have adequate time to contribute meaningfully to the board while reducing any perceived influence from the agency or the stakeholders. Additionally, I recommend introducing two-term, six-year limits for board members. This change would foster fresh leadership, ensure continuity, infusion of new ideas, and help the VAB remain dynamic and responsive in addressing the needs of New York City veterans. The city charter calls for the VAB to elect a chair and vice chair annually. To strengthen governance and improve documentation, I would recommend legislation codifying the position of secretary and amending the charter to extend the term of each officer instead of annually to two years, allowing for greater continuity and stability. Additionally, the lack of a legislated DVS liaison to the VAB has caused frequent turnover in this role, which disrupts continuity and support. Since 2008, the VA's annual reports have consistently called for funding resources from DVS to support record-keeping and ensure continuity. In the absence of dedicated funding in the upcoming '26 budget, I propose legislation that would designate a DVS position, probably Intergov, to the position as liaison of the VAB, as well as mandating meeting location support. This position with defined duties would ensure dedicated communication and operational support for the board. Expanding outreach is essential to increasing awareness of the VAB's role and encouraging greater participation. Currently, the charter only requires DVS to post VAB meeting notifications on its webpage at least one week prior to each public meeting. And I want to note here that I went back during this hearing and looked at X. And the last time they posted on Twitter slash X about a VAB meeting was February 21st, 2024. However, many veterans do not frequently check DVS's website, leaving them unaware of the board's meetings or purposes, which limits its reach and impact. Additionally, DVS is required to maintain and periodically update contact information for veteran organizations within the city and notify them of meeting details by regular or electronic mail. During my tenure on the board, particularly as secretary, I never saw evidence that this requirement was ever met. I recommend legislation requiring meeting notifications be published at least two weeks in advance and are included in the last two editions of DVS's Friday newsletter prior to the meeting date. It's worth noting that the last oversight hearing before today occurred in 2017. To ensure the VAB is fulfilling its mandate, I recommend this committee hold oversight hearings at least every two years. Regular oversight hearings will provide an opportunity to assess the board activities, deficiencies, and to give the VAB a voice to ensure that they are meeting the needs of the veterans' community. In conclusion, the VAB is a vital advocate for veterans' concerns. By addressing its challenges and implementing some of these proposed recommendations, we can strengthen the board, promote greater accountability, and ensure it fulfills its mission, serving those who have served. Thank you, Councilmember.
Very good. And I like the, you know, I'm reading, I know you were rushing through it, but there's some very good recommendations here, which I think will stabilize the board. But we go back to the budget, that they have no money.
Yeah.
I mean, that they can't even provide, you know, refreshments.
Correct.
That's a disgrace.
Yeah, again, we've had it in the annual report since 2018, when Commissioner was on the board.
But I'll hear recommendations from you and from the VAB about what would be a functioning, you know, a functioning budget that they could have. And it could be, you know, $5,000. It could be 500. I don't know. I don't know what that number would be. But I agree that we should have staff on DVS to just facilitate and work with the board because they're stretched now. That would, it all goes back to increasing the budget of DVS, which, if we did that, we'd at least have a fighting chance to have a very, very functional board. But you can't have that when you make it tough on the board members, and they show up and they don't even get a glass of water or a bottle of water.
Well, one of the things, just to point out real quickly, one of the things that, before I left the board, that had started to be discussed, because remember, going into the pandemic, everybody went on Zoom. So, one of the things coming out of it, and I never really got to say this, but I think it's worth noting, is one of the things that the VAB should consider is that the board members, if they cannot make it, can be on the Zoom. But wherever the meeting is taking place, the representatives of those boroughs, of that borough, should be physically at that meeting. So, if it's in Staten Island, the Staten Island member should be there. If it's a queen, they should be physically there.
Yeah, these are good suggestions. And we're going to, you know, we'll talk about it with the Veteran Advisory Board. But we really need, like, some ideas on the bylaws. And all this could be mentioned in the bylaws, which I.
Well, I will tell you, I wrote the last set of bylaws, and if you saw it, you know, it was written in 2017. So, it does need to be updated. I mean, that really, it does need to be updated as the board has grown. So, that's something I think the leadership is aware of, and I'm sure they'll take up as well. And I'd like to make one more point around CUNY. I testified several years ago to your predecessor that one of the issues around CUNY is that each CUNY president runs their campus like a fiefdom to some extent. And so, what they are concerned about is numbers on their campus. And so, what are they concerned about? The student veterans on their campus. The VA has also seen some changes over the years where now it's more reporting. So, central office, to me, has become more of a reporting mechanism from the campuses to them. But, I mean, I know the Commissioner would probably know better because he speaks to the chancellor, vice chancellor in his travels when he takes pictures with them.
Thank you, Joe. Timothy.
Good afternoon. Chairman Holden, members of the City Council, and guests of veterans. My name is Timothy Penya. I run an organization called Veterans Justice Project, also The Forgotten Veteran. I've been in New York City about two and a half years, coming here from Phoenix. I had, in 2016.
Could you pull the mic a little closer to you?
Yes. 2016, I became homeless and entered into a VA transitional program called Grant and Per Diem Program. I also participated with the Arizona Veterans Advisory Board on numerous occasions. While at Manahouse, the GPD program in Phoenix, I was the front desk clerk for a year and a half, providing transitional services to homeless veterans. I was also the photo journalist, and I was the outreach coordinator with about 100 to 125 visits from veterans in the streets, camps, and shelters. That was our job. That's what we did as veterans in VA system, receiving VA benefits. I'm a disabled vet. So, when I came to New York, I was expecting the same program. What I got was a violent shelter, run by Department of Homeless Services, not Catholic Charities, not Tunnels to Towers, Department of Homeless Services. It should be said that the Department of Homeless Services is not going to provide us services, period, because they are literally working themselves out of a job. Every time a veteran leaves Borden Avenue, it's one less veteran on the street. And if you take all those 700 veterans who are in shelters around the city and you put them in housing, we wouldn't need to be here. One of the things that I have noticed that there seems to be two distinct types of veteran services in New York City. You have city-run services, such as Department of Homeless Services, Department of Veteran Services, Institute for Community Living. And then you have the advocacy groups, such as Veterans Advisory Board and the Veterans Task Force. My experience with the Veterans Advisory Board has not been pleasurable. When I attempted to bring attention to the way that I was being treated in the shelter, in a VA program, I was ignored. You were at the meeting, so was Mr. Bello, when we were taken out of the main room and somebody said to the effect of, did anybody get that disgusting email from Penya? The email was sent only after I was ignored by the Veterans Advisory Board. And yes, the photos were taken inside of the shelter. Yes, the dead bodies, the photos were taken inside the shelter. They were disgusting. They are disgusting. And the conduct is still continuing on. We have no friends in this city. As a homeless, and I believe I'm one, if not the only veteran, who has experienced homelessness in New York City, but also worked the front desk of a successful transitional program in Phoenix, we cannot depend on our advisory board nor our Veterans Task Force because we're not saying what they want to hear. So, we're ignored. Then, when our frustrations get the better of us, then we're shown outward disdain. And we have had an awful lot of discussion today on access to the veterans. If you want to talk to the veterans, we are here. We want to be here. We are waiting for you to show up. But you won't show up. And when we do show up, DHS will not let us in. I think you experienced that yourself. DHS will not let us in. Last week, I showed up with Francesca DePaolo, Homes for Veterans. She has spearheaded numerous donations for Borden Avenue. We showed up with $75 worth of coffee. We had to serve it out on the bench in 27-degree temperatures because DHS would not let us in the door.
Well, let me just tell you, Timothy, we were delivering coats with the Vietnam vets at Borden a few weeks ago. They had to sign a disclaimer. Many of the vets didn't want to sign a disclaimer. So, they had to leave. Even though we had collected, they had collected tons of gloves, jackets, coats, socks, hats, a lot of it worth, you know, $10,000, let's say. They had to leave. These were veterans.
Yeah.
So, DHS, I'm not happy with some of their policies. We had to sign a disclaimer. And only a few of us would sign it because some of the vets say, well, why should, I'm helping. I'm doing something here. I'm a veteran. I've worked hard to collect all this. This is kind of an insult. So, DHS, I wasn't happy with that policy. I'm not happy that they're circling the wagons. And it's disturbing. So, we just have to move on. I think Vicky Paladino has, Councilmember Vicky Paladino has a question. No, she has a question.
It's coming in the front door and it's going out the back.
Yeah, right. Well, we're experiencing the same thing.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Timothy, excuse me, I don't, I need to be a little bit more educated on, you spoke about Phoenix and Arizona.
Yes.
I am just very curious, if they ran such a great program there. There's several levels to this question. Why did you come to New York, knowing that our services stink? I mean, if you were getting treated as well as you were getting treated in Phoenix, Arizona, I don't know what provoked you to come here.
One, I'm born and raised in Arizona. We all have history from our old communities. It just wouldn't go away.
I get it. Okay, so you needed a fresh page.
I struggle with suicide ideation.
Totally get it. Okay, understood.
In 2016, when I became homeless and I went into Manahouse, I filed my claim. I received my award. I left the VA homeless program. I moved into my own apartment. I was there for five years before I came to New York. When I started struggling in 2021, like, really struggling, I knew I had to leave. One of the things that I learned through the GPD program and the community engagement, including the Arizona Department of Veteran Services, was to be able to identify when I was going down that path again.
Got it.
That's when I made the move.
Got it. Okay.
All right, Tim, we have some other people who testified. Thank you so much, panel. Thank you again.
Yep.
We're going to go on remote. We have Dorothy Farley. Dorothy Farley?
Yes.
Great. All right. You can go. You have three minutes.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just putting on my camera. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Dorothy Farley, and I serve as Vice President of Behavioral Health and Social Services for the Community Healthcare Network, otherwise known as CHN. CHN is a federally qualified health center with 14 sites citywide that provide critical care and social services for patients in underserved communities. We reach well over 50,000 patients annually. CHN welcomes individuals of all ages, regardless of their ability to pay. While our services are many, I would like to highlight the work we specifically do for veterans, particularly for their mental health. CHN's Military Family Wellness Program connects active and former service members to health and social services. Each participant is screened and assessed for mental health needs, including post-traumatic stress disorder, by a licensed clinical social worker, and can receive referrals for services like individual and family counseling and psychiatry, medication management, as well as medical care. We provide dental services and other social services, including legal support provided for our program partner, the Veterans Advocacy Project. With the Veterans Advocacy Project, our program participants can receive assistance for public benefits, PA claims, discharge upgrade applications, housing support, and other civil legal issues. The Veterans Advocacy Project works closely with CHN to ensure continuity of care and provide CHN training on cultural competency when working with veterans and understanding their legal needs. To speak to our program's impact, we have many Army veterans, and one who was referred to our program to address mental health concerns and housing instability. Our social worker provided a mental health assessment, identified the need for a higher level of care, and helped him schedule an initial intake appointment at the VA for treatment. The social worker also referred the patient to the Veterans Advocacy Project for assistance with rental areas. The patient is now attending regular talk therapy and psychiatric appointments at the VA while receiving legal representation for his housing concerns. In another example, a 33-year-old US Navy veteran and a single mother of two was referred to our program, given. to our program, given her childcare and employment concerns. With CHN, she learned how to-
Thank you. Time's expired.
Sorry?
You can finish up.
Okay. CHN is a proud and honored to work with our veterans' community and greatly appreciates City Council's support for our program. We are committed to its continuation, and I thank you.
Dorothy, how do we, how are the veterans getting in touch with you? What's the best way to contact your office?
Well, clearly, we have a public website, and they can do that, and that would be chnnyc.org, and it's very, very easy to do that.
What about a phone number? Do you have a phone number?
Okay, you can call, I'll let you call me directly, and then I will move you forward, and that would be 212-240-2420.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have a question from Councilmember Palladino.
You're a non-for-profit?
Yes.
Where do you get your funding from?
We're a federally qualified health center, so we get hearsay funding, and many city and state-
So the city is funding a non-for-profit to do good work. However, the city is not funding where, really? It's going to an outside source. This city is run by non-for-profits. Okay, thank you.
Okay, our next remote is Claire. Claire, I didn't get your last name. We don't have it. Could you tell us your last name?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Claire Barker.
Barker, okay, thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon again, Chair Holden and members of the Committee on Veterans and all advocates. Thank you for your total dedication. Again, my name is Claire Barker. I'm the intake advocate at Veteran Advocacy Project, and I'll cut it down to VAP. VAP provides free legal services to low-income veterans and their families, with a focus on veterans living with PTSD, traumatic brain injuries, substance use disorder, and other mental health conditions. I have the honor of speaking with veterans and their family members daily. Unfortunately, many veterans contact VAP each day with their daily struggles. Few, if any, are aware that a Veterans Advisory Board exists, that there is a board that can give voice to their concerns. One of the major complaints made to our office is about how much misinformation is out there, or little information, or assistance vets find, sometimes the phones just ring when they're directed to another organization. Many veterans are frustrated with being passed around. Another issue that's a big one are evictions, particularly with our senior veterans. There are reports of being threatened, bullied, and daily harassment by certain landlords and management companies, particularly in the Bronx. And again, our veterans have a hard time finding someone to assist with these issues. I'll just give you a few. Facing eviction after living in an apartment for over 30 years, and we hear this a lot, it appeared landlords may want the apartment to have it at marketable rate because a lot of the veterans are there 40, 30 years, with paying rent $200, $300. Succession rights with apartments after living in the apartment and the family member passed. Illegal apartments, tenants sharing electricity, city paying for illegal apartments because some of them have vouchers. Veterans in the shelters waiting to receive services to locate apartments are being threatened with being removed from the shelter if they don't accept an apartment that is given to them or shown to them by the shelter. Veterans are sometimes immediately homeless when returning from deployment. Domestic abuse, there are no relocation services sometimes. I'll give an example, survivor may have to flee the home only to be sued in court later for non-payment several years down. I could go on, but I won't take up too much of your time. I'll cut to the chase. We, as a city, we, all of us, as a city, have to do a better job for our veterans. Some days, I cry from the stories I hear. Veterans answer the call when they were called to serve, they signed a blank check, and the least we can do as a city is to ensure that veterans are aware, they have a voice, and that there is a board they can speak to. Therefore, more mechanisms may need to be put in place to raise awareness, as you've discussed all day, among veterans, that there is a board that exists. I read the Veteran Advisory Board vision, and it says it's for New York City to have the most effective local veteran policies in the United States. Please, I don't want to offend anyone because I know we're all doing the same thing. We're all trying to assist our veterans. When I say services aren't accessible, it's not that the service may not exist, but the veterans are not aware of the service. And they don't know what's available. Again, there must be additional marketing. If you want to get the word out, I'm a good vehicle. I speak to veterans all day, every-
Thank you, Claire. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate your advocacy, and thanks for testifying.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other people that would love to testify today? Anybody who could sign up? Anybody else? Last call? Okay, thank you so much. I think we had a great hearing, good information, and this hearing is adjourned.